Ray, I think you went, John, you want John to go first?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
Last meeting, the, uh, we're in the quasi-traditional, excuse me, deliberative session. Uh, VSA is very specific that quasi, that deliberative sessions for quasi-traditional affairs. Executive session would have allowed you to do exactly the same thing. The only, the, the results would have been the same regardless, but the difference would have been that the, just the vote would have been in open session. I'm making a big deal out of it, but it sets a certain amount of precedent and I hope the board can use that vehicle again when executive session is more appropriate.
Um, I, I think it's necessary to understand the law and read the law and the statute nine six three says that quite clearly that the legislative body forthwith shall in writing appoint a replacement. It doesn't say anything else about it other than it starts, it gets into B and C. Um, if, if there's, uh, more than, uh, you know, like three people were missing, then, uh, there would have to be a special election. Uh, if there was nobody, then it would be, uh, C would be an appointment from the governor. So, you know, basically what I did was look at a, uh, description of legislative and judicial and quasi judicial decisions and what they are. Uh, that's, that's, uh, issued by VLCT. Uh, VLCT, uh, identifies legislative decisions as, um, like the making of laws, the passing of laws, the acceptance of, like zoning bylaws, the creation of that stuff. Quasi judicial is the implementation of those policies. And nine six three would qualify as a policy that you would adhere to and you would follow. And it clearly says that you, you do it in writing. That's what it says.
I know it says that.
That's what it says. And that's what we did. And furthermore, I think what we did was far more transparent than what the law calls for. So, I'm, I'm sorry that you disagree with it, but you.
No, I'm dropping it right now.
You said that a week, two weeks ago. So, um, but here we are. Um, any other comments, Ray?
I just wanted to give a quick highway update. Um, we have finished our bigger, um, ditching and structures, culverts, cranks on Golden Ridge and Mountain View, Mountain View has been done for a while. Um, the only other things we have out there is the paving bid has not been finished yet. It's supposed to be even in the next two weeks on Sunset Cherry Lane and a section of Prasher Road. And the other big one is the, um, crack sealing bid. Um, it's a continuation of the grain we had for paving, um, last year. So it's tied to Spelva Pond Road, but all the last two roads can be crack sealed. So I'm going to have Center Road, Reservoir, Spelva Pond and, um, Airport Road be cracked sealed. And they should be doing that if we took the, um, nine four zero. Tell me if you can get the money back. That's sitting out there in the, um, moving that work fairly on schedule.
Good. Go ahead.
The select court packet has been revised to include the draft policy for the village waste water committee. That's right on, online. Um, I just wanted to let everybody know in case you didn't see my email.
Any other comments? Anybody? Okey dokey. Um, review the minutes from the previous meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes nine eighteen twenty twenty-three with corrections if needed?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes?
I have one.
Yep.
Under number six, um, where it did go into the board appointment. It did, so I'm a little bit torn on this because I know that August was sworn in by the town clerk that night. Um, but, but I do know, so I'm agreeing halfway with what you said and I'm also agreeing with what John said earlier. Um, I don't know exactly who, um, or whether, and I believe that I'm going to answer my own question to be yes, that the board must have a motion to appoint, similar to any other appointment, the person for that term.
Can you show me where it says that in writing, in the law?
No, but that's what we've done in the past, which we follow whatever that we've done, including the seat that I stepped down when, when, um, Ed Morris became town manager. Um, and, and like I said, I don't, it's in the minutes here that says this, but it didn't really say, it, it, you know, it said that August would, that came back. It's a little vague here to say the description of exactly what happened. And I know that, that Floanne, you know, when you had her here to swear, amen, to, I think he's already taken a couple of votes. So, I, I'm just, I'm reading the minutes and then I, I know I have a very clear memory of what's happened in the past, what we do. And I'm, we've met and interviewed candidates for different things. And then there's always been a motion to say, similar to what we're probably going to do with the planning board when that comes up, we've, we make a motion to.
That's, that's a different situation. Those are appointed officials. These are, we are elected officials and the law says that the, quote, "The legislative body shall forthwith appoint in writing the replacement." Which is, now, now, hang on, I, I have it. I don't have it with me tonight, but I have it. I meant to bring it, but I, I forgot it. Uh, cause I want to include that with the letter we're going to sign tonight, which is the letter of appointment that, that we have for us to sign tonight, which is consistent with nine six three, which is a state statute. Um, and it, 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 when you read the statute and you read VLCT's interpretation of legislative and quasi judicial process, nine six three becomes policy and it's our job to implement the policy, which means a deliberative session, make a decision and issue it in writing, which is what we did. It's what we're doing. And in fact, I, I feel we were probably more transparent than the law calls for by handling it the way we did. So, that's how I feel about it. And I understand how you feel. I understand how John feels.
I don't feel, so that, by what you told me then, two things had to happen. I'll respond to what you just said this way. Something changed. You're, you're saying that nine six three came about after I stepped down one time and it got filled by a motion.
I'm not saying that at all. I don't know when it, when it was written that way. I didn't check the date.
So have we been doing it wrong all along?
I, possibly. I'm not dealing with that. I, I don't, uh, uh, what does that matter at this point?
No, I wouldn't, I'm just, I'm just asking these questions because I know what's happened in the past and then I see what the minutes say.
Oh, okay. Is that it on the minutes? Any further discussion on the minutes? Anybody? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then it's carry. ARPA discussion.
I thought you were taking up the appointment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. I got that written right here. Okay. Um, Kelly, you brought that up. You have a nomination.
No, I just brought it up.
If anybody want to nominate anybody for that position, the vice chair is open. Is, do I hear a nomination for vice chair? If you don't want to do it tonight, that's fine. We can.
I'll nominate Dave Fuller. I'll second.
Don't need a second. It's a nomination. Dave, you, you accept that?
Yes.
Okay. There's a nomination. Any further nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Dave Fuller, vice chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Dave. Here. That, that means a pay raise, right?
Yep.
Uh, okay. ARPA discussions. Brandon?
All right. Uh, so this, backing up to the second meeting in August, the board asked that I take two hundred thousand dollars and propose the expend, uh, propose expenses for that two hundred thousand dollars. Um, on the first page, that shows what we've spent to date. Um, and it goes through the expenses that were approved, um, including the small business grants, COVID supplies, testing, including firefighting gear, washing extractor, the lowest building assessments, police cruiser, late filing, fee waiver, um, Martin Moria Hall roof replacement project, the West Weathersfield roof replacement project, the town garage roof replacement project, the water district sub-rat food shelter refrigerator, the project down here and the Martin Moria Hall generator. Um, the second chart shows how we'd break out the other two hundred thousand dollars. Um, these are estimates only of, if the board agrees with these projects, then we would reach out to contractors and get confirmed pricing for them. Um, but we use what we know right now for, to develop these.
Some of the drainage around here could cost a lot more than fifteen grand.
It could be twenty or twenty-five. It depends on how we do the project. Um, so we will develop this scope report. We have a, there's a couple of different ways to do that project. Um, so I think we, we would put it on the board agenda for discussion on the options for that project. And kind of see where you, where you would want to go.
Yes, sir.
I have a suggestion.
Go.
And, and not to take up a lot of time tonight, because I, I haven't really looked at this list that, to study it that closely, but perhaps it'd be helpful for us to do some homework and to try to prioritize what they think is important and rank them on the list that Brandon provided.
That's exactly what we're supposed to do. That's what I envisioned to start with.
Nice. And you know what? Just reading this from the first, uh, at first glance, there's no question in my mind that the drainage is rising to the top here of Martin Hall because of the experience that we've had down here. We don't want this to reoccur.
Nope.
And at all. And that would come before anything to do with, like repaving or something because it's going to require digging on both sides or one side or some side. I don't know what side. So.
Well, and to, and to speak to that, maybe security rises above paving.
Yes.
You know, once we get moving through things.
Yes.
Um, uh, but, but that's exactly what we need to do. We all need to look at it and, and this was from the town manager. That's what we asked from him. And now, yeah, we need to look at it and see what we agree with here.
And that's a really good question from Kelly a minute ago where, so if, if you could give us further information or somebody could. Because, you know, fifteen thousand, I don't know whether that works or not, but if it spills over to the twenty and twenty-five thousand, I still think that that would rise closer to the top to, to maybe knock out, like perhaps the office redesign or something, or I don't know what. So.
Well, well, maybe that one just rises to the top and we need to start trying to get some numbers on it.
Oh, I think that's, I think we've done that kind of thing before. We should be. Yes. I'm, I'm perfectly happy with asking him to get some design started on that.
The only problem is, is we won't know, we won't have a, we need the engineering done before we can give it to a contractor to give us a cost.
And that's where I was, I tried to, tried to say that one second ago.
So look forward with the engineering?
I'm going to have to take a, ask everybody what.
What's the consensus of the rest of the board? Yeah. On, on.
Just to bring you up to speed, August, what happened like a year or two ago is we had a lot of serious water here on the outside of the buildings and the whole sides here kind of buckled and the floor came up, up this high. So we are insured by the Vermont Legion Cities and Towns. We tried to claim, make a claim about water damage. They said, uh-huh, you're not covered. So, we had to fix it.
Water damage is not covered.
But we didn't, but we didn't fix where the, where the source is coming from. So it's.
You can, you can, you can see that wall buckling again now and we've seen some problem down here. So there's still a, a moisture problem. It's a drainage issue.
Have to mitigate the issue.
Yep. So, you know, we, we fixed the roof. My, my, the way I look at it, we fixed the roof, but we didn't fix the, the foundation and, you know, the foundation's pretty important too. So.
So, did, did anybody give you an idea of perhaps what the engineering might be for that, for this? So, I mean, you have, you have the ability by yourself to seek that out under your job description.
But I don't have any, well, yes, for the, for the estimate, I think it'll be up to five thousand dollars depending on which engineering firm can do it the soonest. Um, and I can move forward with the disarian census from the board to authorize a certain dollar amount to exceed.
And that's where I was wondering if you had gathered any preliminary information.
So, so you need up to five thousand dollars from ARPA to, uh, from us to move forward with the engineering?
Yes. And that, of course, we would get the three quotes and whichever quote is the least, you know, the soonest is the engineering.
And five thousand is enough?
I think that's fine for, for now, yes. Um.
Motion to authorize the, the town manager to, to search three companies to provide engineering for the, uh, drainage here at Martin Hall and then, um, authorize him to, to make that decision with the chair. How's that? When he gathers the information.
Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Motion is to, uh, so, uh, to solicit bids for engineering and, uh, for the town manager and the chair to, um, see that through.
Solicit quotes.
But then, so, so to keep that going, so we don't hold you up, is to authorize you to, to go ahead and, you know, ask the person that you decide on, that, out of the three.
Okay. All right. So we'll get the quotes, pick one, pick the, pick the winner and go.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Any, uh, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Brandon, we have job to do. That'll get us moving. That's a good.
Where's the cost coming from?
What's that?
Where's the cost coming from?
That, that, yeah. That probably should be, should have been incorporated into the motion.
Oh, the ARPA funds.
That's ARPA funds.
That's also part of the motion.
Yep, yep. Um, we've already voted, so now we're going to have to back up. Um, so, so a motion to, uh, to rescind the, um, the previous motion.
We'll just make an amendment.
Make an amendment? Okay, go ahead.
I'm making an amendment to the prior motion with, with regard to Martin Mall drainage, that the funds be allocated from the ARPA funds balance.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion is amended to include that the funding will come from the ARPA, uh, account. Thank you. Yeah, I'm, yeah, we missed that, Steve. Thank you. It's nice to see you. It's been a while since we've seen you here. Yeah. You've enjoyed that, haven't you? I'm sure. Um, now, any further, uh, discussion on ARPA? Uh, I think we, we're going to take a look at the rest of this stuff and try to, um, uh, start to bring a, a priority plan forward for further discussion. Okay? Uh, solid waste fee assessment policy. I, I think, Dave, you requested this, right?
Well, so here's, I'm not necessarily looking at the policy, but here's what I had happen to me in the past. So, I recall, uh, where, uh, land that doesn't have any buildings, uh, that doesn't have any water, septic or anything, was exempt from the solid waste fee. Two of my properties have that on my tax bill. One does not. And I asked Brandon about that and he said, well, that's in the farm name and so that doesn't count. And I would still, I still recall that, um, being done in the past. So what I asked for was, okay, and, and this is, but, but we see this on the agenda to talk about. What I asked for was, since there are something like sixteen hundred and forty-seven parcels in town, can you find out which ones have the fee and which ones don't? And I'd never really heard back whether there were any, you know, how many are, are not on that or what. So that would start finding out exactly, uh, if there are parcels of land that don't have any buildings on them at all or however that is established about what that tax bill is charged for fifty dollars or not.
Yeah, there's quite a few people have asked me about it too. I tell them to go to the town office and ask the ma, town manager because I have no clue. They have property that they pay the fifty dollars for the dump sticker, but yet there's nothing on it. It's just a piece of property.
So if you read in this, in the, in the policy that Brandon provided, and I knew this was going to happen, uh, if you look who signed it, Dave Fuller signed it.
I didn't notice that.
And so did John.
I think Fuzella did too.
Yeah, I know. So, it does, it's so many words. Like, I don't know where it exactly says, or the, uh, the out is. Uh, it says something like under the same ownership or something like that. So, so, um, so it gets technical, um, because we own three properties together and then Fuller Farm owns one, which I'm the, the.
The sole person that runs Fuller Farm. Um, so, um, it says C, right?
Applications under, I don't know if this is.
Two, two, yep.
It's a page, page one.
Um, page thirty of the, uh, of, of the packet.
Yep. So under C, for purposes of this policy, contiguous parcels in common ownership shall be treated as one. Then go to D, and which is, applies to me, um, non-contiguous, so the fields are away from the farm, uh, in common ownership undeveloped with, without any, oh, it says with any structures shall be treated as one.
Which are undeveloped with any structures, meaning they don't have, which means it doesn't have any structures.
Right, right. So I guess what I'd like to see is that, you know, the copy of the list of, to start with, of the tax bills somewhere to see if there's a piece of land somewhere.
One of the other things that I was looking at, Dave, after this was the, the exceptions. You have to start getting into some of the exceptions.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm not sure it really covers a farm though.
Well, I'm not sure that it has to. I mean, suppose you have, uh, a deed that says you have fifty acres of woods. You have no building on it. You have no, for me, that means that you don't have any ability to make trash. When the farm was running, we, we, the barn is on the same property as the house. It was charged a fifty dollar fee and it, any waste that the farm generated had to pay the per bag fee, which was like more than what the house was. So you get, you get charged. It's not like you don't get charged. Um.
Well, the po, the policy is pretty clear though. It said each parcel of land in Weathersfield shall be assessed a waste management fee each tax year. For the purpose of this policy, contiguous parcels of land in common ownership shall be treated as one, same as the tax bill, right? That, that's how the tax bill is, is handled. If they're contiguous, you just get one tax bill. So that's one.
So I'm not sure that that's fair and I'll tell you why. For, for the solid waste district. Let's say that somebody owns three properties that are, that happen to be joined together and they have like three or four houses on that. So, so that means that you're only paying one fifty dollar fee for three or four houses. So you could turn that the other way.
This only applies to parcels of land.
Well, I'm talking about when you, when you look at the application of.
But if you had a parcel of land that's developed, it, you, can you think of anybody that owns three pieces of land and they've got a house on each one of those pieces of property?
Well, let's go to, let's go to three with the exception of campgrounds. Because if you, if the campground is assessed one fifty dollar fee, you might have, I don't know, might have like a, a really lot of now that are, that are not, they, they become permanent residents.
Um, that's a good, that's a good point that might need to be addressed, but you also have mobile home courts in a park.
Well, that'll, that'll come out on a reappraisal, you know.
Because it kind of starts to say the same thing about the mobile home park, about getting one, but then it says each individual mobile home in a quarter park is assessed one fee each year.
See, but, so that's different than the campground.
That's why it's under exceptions.
That's penalizing the, like, the mobile home parks.
Not real, is it? I don't know what it is.
Rewarding the campground.
Right.
I believe if you look further down in the policy, if people have campground on the East Transfer Station, you have to pay fifty dollars for a sticker for the season. So that covers. If you're camping in a campground, if you want to use the facility, you must purchase a sticker.
Is that true? Do you have people coming in the office doing that?
I was recalling by the, because you did.
No. Each individual mobile home within a.
Oh, 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 actually it's, it, it, because it's on two different pages, it's one thing.
Yeah.
The first exception, A, the, the first exception, A, is on two different pages. The first paragraph or sentence is, uh, campgrounds shall be assessed one fee each year. This will be, this will entitle the property owner to one permit to utilize the town's solid waste management facilities. I would take that to be, I'm going to use a name, the Penders. They used to own the Crown Point Campground. In a case where a renter wishes to utilize the, the town's solid waste management fee, he or she shall pay one half of the annual fee to obtain a permit. So if there's a renter there, they would come to the town and they're a renter at their campground. They want to use it. They have to pay fifty percent of the assessment fee for a sticker. That's what it says.
Twenty-five bucks.
There you go.
And the theory, the theory was you're in a campground.
You had anybody come in the office paying twenty-five dollars for a sticker?
Well, what happened was we developed an interim permit sticker policy, which is currently in effect. Um, and you give out temporary permits.
Right.
currently in effect, and you give out temporary permits within a date range.
I'm thinking we need to do, let him do some more homework on this.
Well, and I wanna point out another one that I had, because it's, Steve will understand this, I hope. I rent to his daughter. I'm a landlord. I get the tax bill for the property, I give them the sticker. I don't charge them for it, and that's fine. But what if, what if I owned an apartment building and I had, or a duplex or something and I had two other families, and they need, I personally, I think it should be the landlord's responsibility to buy the stickers and get them to his people.
What we've done in the past is if someone comes in, tell them, "Get ahold of your landlord, try to get it from them." If that doesn't go through, they have to pay the costs.
Well, that's fine, but I think that oughta be addressed in the policy, is all I'm saying. We oughta take a look at, that's just another thing I think we should look at.
But I think that he's saying that there was an amended policy probably voted on by us that we didn't know about since 2010.
Yes, which deals strictly with the permit sticker being not the assessment. So, solid waste fee assessment is different than the permit sticker.
Correct.
So why don't I get both of those together and then also take a look at both policies and identify any weaknesses.
So, is it possible, without doing a lot of work, to identify the tax bills of sixteen hundred and fifty people to see which ones are assessed and not, or is it like a really lot of work?
I have it. I can just forward it right over to...
So how many do you think don't have it? Hundred? Ten?
I didn't go through each one, but I do have it.
Oh, it's not, it didn't total this for you on the software?
No, at the bottom, no, so I'll have to go through it.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Okay.
I take all the permits and stickers. Way too many.
So?
He bought things.
No, they're fifty.
What's that?
I gave you a deal, twenty bucks.
Let's not fall apart too much here.
No, he's gotta do more homework.
He's looking real quick.
Yeah, but he's got, he's got, there's more.
It's not gonna total?
Eighty-one thousand seven hundred, so I got that.
Actually, eighty-one thousand?
Divided by fifty, divided by fifty, right?
No, I meant...
Parcels. Isn't that the num, isn't that the total we get on that?
Weathersfield is wrong.
Eighty-one thousand?
That's what it says implied in this.
That's divided by fifty, right?
That would mean all of them.
Record is across us.
Sixteen twenty, that would be all, pretty, pretty close.
It's like sixteen forty-seven, I think, or six, no, there might be a little more with the new grant list, might be sixteen sixty.
Okay, so he's...
I bet they're showing us like thirty or forty that don't have fees. That's the ones I'm interested in, to see, to match that with the application of the, what's on, no, what's on the, no, what's on the tax bill.
Okay.
You know, what, you get the parcel number and you would be able to say, "Ah, it's a vacant piece of land."
Mm-hmm. Okay, so you need some more time?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So we're good on that, we're gonna, that's gonna move to, that's gonna stay on the agenda then, right? Future? Thank you. Signing orders. Brendan, what's that?
The treasurer. And, well, the treasurer and I.
Okay, go ahead, guys.
So, you're familiar with signing orders because you do it at every meeting. So we prepare, the accountant prepares a bunch of then in checks, and you, you see the checks and you see the report, you review it, you hopefully authorize, you approve it, and you authorize the treasurer and me to sign the checks. So that works most of the time. You meet every two weeks, sometimes it's every three weeks, and things crop up that don't fit nicely in that system. A few years back, we, you folks, gave us the authority to, at least to, gave me the authority to sign checks to avoid, in advance of a select board meeting, in order to avoid late fees. And that was specifically in response to the credit cards that the people's bank, because we got, by the time we got the bill, we had ten days before the due date, and we had three credit cards, they concerned three accounts, so we were racking up a hundred and five dollars' worth of late fees every month, because it was a miracle if that ten-day period coincided with a board meeting and when we could get to the bank. So, basically, for that purpose, we were authorized, the finance director, previously, now the accountant and the manager and myself all agreed that it would be lengthy, we could all sign a document and sign the check at any time, still appear on the warrant you signed, we could do that. So that's the one condition under which I as treasurer officially authorized to sign the check without you folks approving it. But that doesn't cover all the circumstances that crop up. And I love to complain or to push people a little bit when they come in to me and say, "Oh, you have to sign this check today because I don't have the authority to do that." We had something come up a couple months ago where a bunch of folks, it was one of the five departments, were going through training, were filed out at the last minute, they needed to bring a check. So, I have the authority to do that, but then I don't do it, they're gonna go, they're not going to the training. So what do you do? Yes for permission or yes for forgiveness, you know? You do stuff that you're not officially authorized to do from time to time to meet the circumstances. It used to be health insurance companies, we didn't pay by the first of the month, they cancel your health insurance. So you write, you sign that check, even though you're not authorized to do that. So we, we have this kind of thing that goes along where, more often than I'd like, there's some check that has to be signed before it's official, before I've authorized to sign. So, the thought was to at least come to you folks and get an idea as to whether you just wanna let things be and go deal with these circumstances, probably exceed our authorization because it makes sense to do that, or whether you want to amend a policy or develop a policy that kind of states, or gives us some guidelines in terms of when or how we can officially, in an approved way, approved way, deal with those checks that just have to be written before your next meeting. Or, if you cancel a meeting, like happened in September, I didn't hold it for another week, so we ended up...
Two weeks.
Two weeks, right. So we ended up with a lot of checks that really went out late. Who knows if the company's gonna charge a late fee until the bill comes in with a late fee on it.
Steve, what would your preference be on this?
Well, if some, I like to have, my preference would be to follow some sort of policy we have. And you either give the treasurer or that trio of manager, accountant, treasurer, some sort of ability in writing to respond to circumstances and sign a check, but that check still shows up on the warrant. Or you authorize one or two of you folks to come in and sign a check in certain sets of circumstances. So you either give it to the employees or give it to one or two of you folks who are authorized to do it under certain limited set of circumstances.
What I'm hearing is, in the first instance, regardless, irregardless of the circumstance, is that you, the accountant and the town manager are involved. So there is, so there is a layer or level of checks and balances in place that has an eye on this. It's not one person or even two people, most, that have the ability to just say, "We're gonna cut a check and sign it and away it goes." So that's not happening. I just wanna make that clear, that everybody knows that's not happening. That you guys are, there is a checks and balance that's happening. Dave, or anybody else here, what do you, what do you wanna do with this? Dave, go.
This is just for vendors, right, not payroll?
Not payroll. Payroll totally...
Payroll goes right out no matter what.
I believe either annually or at some point in time you authorize payroll, you sign the, I was, it's like two payroll checks because everybody's on direct deposit, but I sign those every week, because you don't wanna meet every week and approve a payroll.
And in the, in the past, we've had, no, it's cut and forgotten, but we've had, we've had discussions before about, why in the world are we making all this work for ourselves with payroll every week? Why aren't we bi-weekly? Why?
That's a separate issue.
A separate issue, yes.
You have lots of time.
That'll be easy, the school does it. The school does make a school board member drive to Windsor to sign things. My daughter did that for a couple of years and then said, "Why do we have to do that?" And I said, "Because you do it," and I would reverse the table if I was there, I'd say, "You're bringing your work to me because you're not paying me to drive to Windsor to sign your checks, that ain't working for me, you, you need to bring the checks to me." But that's, the school does do that, so there is a board member that's involved with some finance signing. I'm sure it's going on today, too.
And that's perfectly, perfectly fine under statutes. You could, if you wanted to, on a regular basis, you could appoint one or two board members to sign the checks, and you wouldn't have to do it at a board meeting, you know? Whether you want to do that or not, it's up to you folks.
I don't think that she signed directly on behalf of the school, I think it was a matter of, that, this is gonna come out wrong, but you're taking the blame off everybody in the office by saying, "Ah, the board signed it, so..."
Well, and here's where I was starting to drift to, first of all, I have complete confidence in the people we have working in this office to do this and handle this, and I trust that things are under, are under control. What I, what I'm seeing perhaps as a solution to this is, like, that two weeks where I was sick and I canceled the meeting and it was two weeks, and like you said, the checks piled up, but you had, there was a few that had to go out. If there was a document that the three of you could sign, because it's, it's a check number of this and this and this and this and this, this is the group of checks that are being authorized by this group ahead of the select board, and you guys put your names on that, and then you or whoever it is goes and heads and signs the checks. That's the, and there's the document that says, "This was reviewed by three people in this office and authorized by this group, authorized by us to do so." I think there would have to be a policy and this board would have to authorize that, but then, but then the three of you that get together and oversee that would sign that you all, you all were part of it, and then, and then you go ahead and sign the checks. Does that, that make sense, like that?
Honestly, that's what we did, even though we, we only had the authority to do that if we avoided late fee. And honestly, a lot of those checks we sent, the company's probably never, would've never charged us a late fee.
Sure, so, okay, so I was...
We violated the rules, but we did what we felt was necessary.
So, so we can just fix that rule with, here?
Yeah, Mike, August had a question.
Yes.
Yeah, I actually have two questions.
And Wendy, too.
The first one is, is there a dollar threshold that we're constrained by? Or is it just a unilateral requirement?
You could implement it, I mean, the rules could, whatever policy you come up with could have a dollar on it.
Then the second question I have is, it seems like this issue arises when there, when you can't do a select board meeting, whether it gets canceled or there's a snowstorm. Is that, is that also, or is this a more common occurrence in between the two-week periods when the select board meets?
Well, I heard him say that in the beginning, that it's occurring more frequently than seemed to be anticipated.
It doesn't occur every two-week period, but it occurs often enough that I think it's necessary for us to come with some sort of common agreement.
Thank you.
So I actually didn't have a question, it was just that if, if something has to be done, why not just have the situation that arises, the reason for it, simple notation as to why, and then, I also agree with the idea of having some sort of a, you know, a constraint of funds, you know, it doesn't have to be, you know, that we could think of a...
Are these...
You would probably have a better idea of what something like that might be that would cover those circumstances.
Brendan?
For a dollar amount.
Can you give us an opportunity to draft a policy based on how we think it should look?
Finally.
To the next board meeting and based on the comments that we've heard tonight.
And this was, this I think was the first step towards doing that, I think we wanted to get, we didn't wanna draft X, and you were like, "Oh, no, 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 no."
What?
We just thought we'd have a discussion, get some sense of what you might be interested in doing, and then we'll draft something, and you can reject it or whatever.
I hesitate a little bit on the dollar amount because you just sometimes don't know what that's gonna look like, but at the same time, it would probably be a one-incident type thing, it'd be one thing that's, and if it was that dire, a special meeting could be called like that to deal with it. We could even do that remotely.
I was just gonna say, Mike.
Yep, right.
Just one option is if you hit that dollar threshold, you leave one signature off, one board member.
Yeah, could do that, too.
I was just gonna say, Brendan.
The three of these folks can go up to X amount of dollars, and if it exceeds this amount of money, one board member will sign off.
Okay, who don't we like?
We're just going down the list, okay, down to chairs, first chair.
We could make them, we would make them liable for the payments.
Yeah, right.
The vice chair.
I think, he wanted a raise.
It is.
No, you offered it. You took it.
Can I comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, August, it's not, I like your idea of capping this, because I don't know, the board would simply wanna be notified of something, but it is not common that a meeting is canceled and wait until the next meeting. Usually, there's a reschedule, and it's not too far off because of the warrants. We've had meetings before where the only thing on the agenda, if somebody's sick or two people can't make it, it's the warrants. We've had that before.
And, and we did discuss that.
Yeah.
And Brendan assured me that, you know, in his conversations in the office, and I trust him, that it wasn't necessary in this, at this particular, at that particular time to do that. But if it was, I would've done exactly that. And if we exceeded the threshold, that's what I'd do, too, just call a meeting, go ahead, write, write a policy, and I think that's a good idea. You guys do a great job, so...
I mean, a couple of things were identified, and we just came to an agreement that we're gonna sign the payment authorization, and if we did that, it wouldn't be necessary to a select board meeting.
Right.
Sometimes you have to ask for permission and sometimes you have to ask for forgiveness. All right, I think we have enough to draft something and bring it out to you.
Good. Good, thank you, Steve. Liquor licenses. Do I hear, we do these one at a time or all together?
One at a time.
Go ahead.
But for ease of me reading, Floanne, can you tell me like where, is this like a class for the, let's take up the first one, which is the Innet Weathersfield.
Does the only one...
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought there were multiple ones.
They have three different, yeah, they do.
Okay, now then we can take them all, as long as the location is the same, I'm okay with saying the same one. So I make a motion that we approve the liquor license for the Innet Weathersfield. First-class, this restaurant thing is misspelled.
Yeah, I guess so.
Restaurant?
Best room wrong.
Restaurant.
Bar license, must be too much alcohol.
It was, it was a test.
What's the first class? That must be high test.
Sorry, Olivia?
Oh, gosh. Third-class restaurant bar license and the outside consumption permit, all for the Innet Weathersfield, Route 106, 1342, Route 106 in Weathersfield.
I hear a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Standard question, does any, does anybody have any, any comment about it, Bill, Bill or anybody? Nothing?
I don't have any comments.
Nothing, okay. How long is this good for, a year?
Remember, I can't hear last year, we had a big, state new system and they never noted by the main application.
Yeah, there was something.
I do recall that.
I remember something, yeah.
Dave, what page is that on, that you're on, right there, in your packet?
Yeah, I'm looking.
Left, top left corner.
Twenty-five, twenty-five of fifty-eight.
I wonder if I'm on the twenty-five?
Yep, page twenty-five.
'Cause I wasn't seeing that.
No.
Twenty-five, no, see, page twenty-five of mine is the...
I have twenty-one.
Well, I got them all. I guess we're special.
Yeah, it starts at twenty-one, but it keeps scrolling into, keep going up a long way.
It was down to twenty-seven.
All this information, yeah, all with one business.
So you got them, they're all green.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, is, we have no further discussion? Standard questions have been answered?
Who was second?
I did.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries?
No. Is there something for us to sign at the end of the meeting? Nothing to sign? Wow.
Not anymore? Used to be.
Used to be.
Cool, how things change.
But at least we have a license now. Before, we just got a name on a paper.
Uh, that brings you back to the table again. Town Clerk project.
Land record system, the COT system is what we do land records through, and we've hired them. Contract we've done, probably, I don't know, fifteen, I think. And, um, so they, they digitized back to nineteen ninety-three our land records. And that was with the $20,000 we got from the state treasurer's office during COVID. Because they wanted access, some people, access on, um, online. So we did that. But we didn't have the indexes attached to it. So now it's time to put the indexes attached to it. So that's what we need for, um, go back to nineteen ninety-three to attach an index. So when they look it up online, they can, I mean, in the COT system, they can, they don't have to, they don't actually have to go to the documents. They can see that there's an index, they know that's what they want, and then they can print the document instead of going into it and finding out that the top bears are the ones that they want. And so it's really for, um, realtors, attorneys, well, anybody that wants to look up the data. It'll be easier for you to do that to the COT system. However, you have to join the COT system in order to do it. I mean, you have to pay a fee. I mean, you can do it, you can look at it and everything, but you just can't print it off until you pay a fee.
Okay, so first, uh, first order of business would be to waive the, um, policy, correct? You can make that part of the motion, right? Because it's sole purchaser and we're not doing three bids?
Yeah, they'd have to waive that.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Um, Floanne, who does this work? Do you do the work? Do you hire additional help? Or is this just a company that comes in and does that work?
No, it's, well, we answer our land records, we answer all our mortgagees and deeds and everything.
Yep.
Right to them. They do it, and we don't see anything until.
So this amount of money you're asking for will go from June of nineteen eighty-four to September of ninety-three, if I'm reading this right?
Yes.
So somebody else is gonna do the work. They're just requesting to be paid to do the work.
They, they do this, they have to do this themselves, but they already have the images.
Okay. How much is in the reserve account? Or is there a reserve account for this kind of thing?
Yes, at $20,000, one hundred.
Twenty-two.
One hundred. So by the time, I mean, you're asking for eleven thousand when we sign the contract, and then eleven thousand, twenty dollars is done. So by then, I should have the other, whatever.
So then your reserve account will be zero?
Yes, yep.
So is that what we normally do? We run an account down to zero?
Sometimes.
And it goes in every year. It gets transferred in there.
So will, will it be, will we be getting another $20,000 to replenish the reserve account that we're draining? Where does that come, where does the $20,000 come from? That, that goes into the reserve accounts?
It's usually paid. People have to pay, people pay online to do this, and then people are coming to add all to do that.
Okay, so every twelve months, do you think we generate $20,000 in fees?
No. It's like.
So fifteen dollar fee per page, right, recording fee per page, ten dollars of it goes, and it's split among three different reserve funds. So either two or three, I forget. Two dollars goes into the utilization fund?
Three dollars goes into the duration, two dollars goes into preservation.
Every time there's a, a recording fee charged per page, three bucks goes into this account. So last year, we put just under $2300 into the reserve fund, um, which was kind of a low year. Years before that, significantly greater than that. So it won't, it won't, it will grow to about 22,000. So Sven spent close to 22,000. So it'll, it'll go down to close to zero, although it will continue to grow back up each year.
So when was the last time we did this?
We never have.
Never have. So what happened prior to the years of nineteen eighty-four? You're not enrolled? How did somebody start at June of nineteen eighty-four, if I'm reading this right? How did you pick that? Or somebody picked that date?
They went back to when we, or we got the money from the state to do what John calls it. They went back twenty years to do this, so that, how many years was it, nineteen eighty-three? Went back to ninety-three to do those damages. They came, they set up, and, um, did that. That was about $25,000.
No, I'm just wondering out loud who and why somebody picked from nineteen eighty-four to nineteen ninety-three?
I'm, I'm thinking that came down to, I, I gotta say, that's the dollar amount.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, the amount, the amount, the amount of records, the number of years we've done, excuse me, is jumping in. It's, um, based on the amount of money you have.
I see.
Yep. Any more questions on this?
I move that we waive the purchasing policy for the Town Clerk project. And then we authorize the Town Clerk to go ahead with the COT systems and remove the associated amount that she has given us here. So do we need to specify? Do you want to specify the actual dollar amounts? Do you think that's a good idea?
Twenty-two thousand, one oh five.
Twenty-two, but, but if we don't have twenty-two thousand, one oh five in the reserve account, then that's gonna be like a problem.
Well, we have time. This is a couple of payments spaced out over the year, and money comes in.
First payment's on one of them.
Okay, I'll make it, I'll make the motion to say, at a cost not to exceed twenty-two, one oh five, to be extended in FY twenty-three, twenty-four. How's that? Because that will cover the, that will cover the, generating a little bit of new fees to make it not run over the reserve account. Right? Get that, Nicole? Hopefully.
Here's one.
Hopefully.
Is there a second?
Some municipal records.
I'll second.
Yeah, I guess we gotta put that in there. Make sure that gets in there, Nicole, right? Municipal records, reserve account.
I would say municipal plan records.
The official title, as per the article that authorized the reserve fund, called it Municipal Records Fund.
Nikki, how you doing over there?
Fund, we call it. But the official title was Municipal Records Fund.
Municipal Records Fund. Um, I, okay, we have a motion. We have a motion in a second. Um, my only question is, uh, would, this, this proposal literally says a schedule of payments where the invoice upon receipt of signed contract is $11,055, balance due upon subsequent monthly invoices squared is $11,050, which is the, the total twenty-two thousand, one oh five. Um, the, it, would, it would.
So that's good, actually. That's good news because once the contract is signed, half is due. And then, I don't know when they're gonna start taking it up, but you would hope that a few extra fees would come in to cover this, so it won't be overrun. That's what, and that's what Steve explained before.
Right.
So I think we're safe.
So, so we're okay. You're, you're happy. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, Floanne. It, it, yeah. Didn't Sven, like, who, no, Sven did, did, he didn't work on this. He did some zoning, it was zoning stuff he did. Um, storm damage, FEMA reimbursements. Brendan, I think you're up.
Yep. Um, so we've been meeting with FEMA every Monday at 1:00 PM, and we actually met at 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM today.
Can I interrupt? Floanne, you mentioned to me earlier that you had some documents for, you're, you're all set? Okay, I'm sorry, Brendan.
If you want me to sign something, you're gonna come up with something, we sign tomorrow.
For?
The nine sixty degree?
Not for you. Not for you to sign. We sign it. We sign it. I give it to you. No, 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 no. We sign it and you file it.
Okay.
According to the law. Sorry. Go ahead.
Same way, Steve. So we've been meeting with FEMA every Monday at 1:00 PM. Today, we met at 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM. And basically, what we've been doing is putting everything together to get reimbursed for the storm damage that we incurred. Um, it's, I think we're at the time where we need to bring this back to the board to get some decisions on how you would like us to proceed. We have three bridges that need some work. We have a Scottney Basin Bridge, Little Scottney Bridge, and Upper Falls Covered Bridge. We have Scottney Basin Bridge. We already have the design completed. If we want to fix the bridge deck to pre-storm conditions, um, this wouldn't increase the hydraulic flow capacity. Um, if the board approves this option, the next step would be to send this project out to bid. Once the bids come back, we have to determine how we would like to proceed with funding. FEMA doesn't give us the funding upfront, and we're responsible for a certain percentage of the cost, uh, which is a seventy-five, twenty-five match. Um, the state then kicks in twelve and a half percent because we have a local emergency management plan and hazard mitigation plan. We would need to take out a loan to pay for the project until we get reimbursed. And then the same goes for Little Scottney Bridge, with the exception that we don't have any engineering completed for this bridge. So we have to send out an RFQ for engineering, and then the same process. We get to pay for it and then get reimbursed, and then send that project out to bid, pay for it, get reimbursed. The same for Upper Falls Covered Bridge. Did I get everything, or is there something like that?
I, I understood it as eighty-twenty.
Eighty-twenty?
That's what I understood.
I think there's another percentage on top of that, though, because we have.
The, the town, or the state did, there was a filing, the state did get approved, we don't do their percentage. So it brought it down to us, and we have to pay. I thought it was five percent that we had.
Oh, it's five percent, okay. Let me verify that.
There's still a lot to pay for first.
Okay, yeah.
So just, just to explain it a little further, the bridge deck of Little Scottney Road had some damage on it from previous years. And it's on our ten-year plan to replace it. I received the grand wash gear to have the design done. It was completed the week before July tenth storm, so we have pictures from before and after. There's a lot more damage now, so it needs to be replaced. It's down to, um, sixteen thousand pounds. Uh, today, the grader had to go all the way up through the west point zero across the bridge, by their covered bridge and greater road.
That's Basin.
Scottney Basin, correct?
No, you said Little Scottney. I know they're together.
I thought, I thought that's what we were talking about. Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
The Scott, Little Scottney Road is, there's two wing walls. There's three segments on the abutment. There's the main abutment of the bridge, and the wing walls are separate. The lower wing wall had underwashed up to five feet deep in caulk in underneath the cement, so the cement's just floating right now. Same thing on the abutment itself. And then the upper wing wall had some previous damage. They won't replace, you know, it's leaning in a little bit. Um, they will replace the riprap abutment. If we want that fixed properly, the engineer tells us in time what it's gonna cost to do that. So that might not be reimbursed for that one wing wall. Um, we might just get a patch through. It came as riprap underneath the concrete, so it's not gonna stay there. We're gonna have to block off the water, put in flowable fill, fill it up, and then put riprap over the top of it. The covered bridge is, um, it started out as the one side, the side source one thirty-one, all the riprap washed away. Riprap needs to get put back. Riprap, if you don't understand, is all big stone, different kinds of stone. You put it in the armor of the concrete wall. It did its job. It's gone now. It needs to be replaced. And looking at the last inspection sheet in twenty twenty-one, there was riprap on the other side, on the masonry side of the wall. Um, it's all gone. I didn't realize how much riprap was gone until I saw the photos earlier today. So we put in the damages for that side of the road as well. That side of the bridge is what, for me. So those are gonna be designed before the, the rock just cast over the bank, and it kind of fell where it fell. Um, this time, it'll be like a cut, like they did on one oh six. It'll cut along the riverbank, put in big stones of foundation under, under grate, under the river grate, and then build up accordingly. That's why the engineer has to, should design it to do it properly. You have some cost estimates that bring them in as well, Mark.
Oh, you did? You did have cost estimates?
Yes.
Nice. Does everybody, those questions, does, does everybody familiar with locations or where these bridges are? Okay, good. Good, nice.
It's, um, that wall will keep undercutting on Little Scottney, and the river will keep going over the top of the Scottney Basin. And the new bridge will start, will particularly hit by rocks and rivers. Um, the only way to fix it is to increase the spans and do a stream, straightening on like Little Scottney. Um, that's really, really expensive, but it is part of the mitigation process, if you want.
I'd, I'd like to kind of talk about these one at a time to start with, so that I don't get confused moving back and forth between one and the other. A Scottney Basin Bridge, um, first thing happening there is, is, it sounds to me like that, that needs to be improved. And, and FEMA will cover that. Is that correct?
There's no, you don't get a written contract from people saying you're gonna cover anything. It's, I'm trying to explain that. He's been trying to get a direct answer. You give them the plan, you give them all the costs, and then you, you can use some of that in the area?
Well, I guess, I guess what I was looking for is an explanation on, uh, excuse me, um, that there was a cha, FEMA always used to just come in and do actual repair. What you had is what we're looking at and we'll go to that. But I think there was a change with FEMA now that says they will, they will enhance, so that there's not.
Mitigation.
Mitigation.
Just mitigation.
Okay, to, yeah.
Their goal is to mitigate the problem.
Exactly.
Right now, the standard is as was.
Okay. That's what I want to talk about.
More into mitigation, and they want you to pursue mitigation. But mitigation, right now, a deck replacement is fairly simple. What you're gonna do in mitigation, you're gonna be taking new wood buckets, at least one, and moving it out, you know, another thirty feet, forty feet, whatever the spending tells you, and you're gonna have to widen the river, a, a bridge where the water can't press.
Okay, so what do you need for a decision from us on Scottney Basin?
Our plan is to first determine how we want to proceed with the bridge, and then try to get a commitment from FEMA. I believe the inspector said that we could potentially get the project approved prior to moving forward with the project, so that we at least know that FEMA will reimburse it. So that is, that is in our plans. Um, for Scottney Basin, we need to determine, well, the board needs to determine whether we want to repair the bridge back to how it was pre-storm or if we would like to, um,
Mitigate.
Mitigate it.
I, I start with the recommendations from you two guys. What do you guys want first?
Yeah, if money wasn't a factor, how to mitigate the situation and fix it for the flood the way it is now.
Brendan?
I second that.
Dave?
There's some other things to look at here, and I'm glad that they're in this order because the seriousness of these bridge repairs are of the order that they're in. Number one, if this, if the Scottney Basin Bridge is going to be replaced, um, or even the abutments or anything underneath the deck, then I think there'll have to be a false bridge setup. And the reason why I say that is, the other, it's a dead end. The other end is a very small covered bridge. So there are approximately eight or nine houses anyway on that road that are gonna need services, uh, meaning, um, oil or whatever they're doing for, um, heating and electric repair and fire services and ambulance. So I, so that's a very big concern to replacing the bridge without having other access over the river. Um, so I think that's a start. It, do you, I'd like to hear the costs that you, that you got on that particular one or what you're estimating, because I'm not, you know, there are enough houses out there in Weathersfield and property where this is not kind of up for debate. I think we're gonna be able to get reimbursed. The good news is, uh, that I've had conversations with two high members of Senator Welch's and Senator Sanders' teams about farm stuff, and they agreed with me when I said, "We're in a new financial year," which will open, uh, October first was the new financial year to the federal government, which will release some funds because they always seem to have disaster money. money in a, in a brand-new year, a financial year that they haven't used. The problem why you probably couldn't get commitment was the same reason why I have spoken about farm stuff was we were at the end of the twenty-three financial year. They're out of money. October first starts a brand-new year in the eyes of the federal government and the Congress just passed a forty-five day continuing resolution. There's, you're gonna see some stuff free up for disasters. So I think we should, do you have engineering plans or do you need them to, to go for the bridge replacement? Is that the first place to start?
It depends on if we would like to repair the bridge back to pre-storm conditions or if we'd like to mitigate it. If we would like to mitigate it, then the bridge design that we currently have won't work.
The, the deck replacement was to replace as is, you know, part of my ten-year plan, that's why I got a grant to pay for it. Just so happens that that design is done and ready to go, so that deck replacement could happen. If we want mitigation, we have to go out to get it engineered, the whole thing. You'd have to tell you what the full bank width, how big it has, how wide it has to be to take all the water, to mitigate the issue. You have no idea what that cost is gonna be. If you're gonna do that, I would strongly suggest you get a price on a temporary bridge deck. Rip that deck out, put a temporary deck on there so the rail trucks, log trucks and everything else can get on that road. The longer we wait, right now it's sixteen thousand pounds.
Right.
So technically, log trucks, my plow trucks shouldn't be going across there this winter to plow the road.
Right.
I mean, we're gonna go do it with a full truck.
And we just sent the grader around halfway around the world to get there.
And go through a road.
And I'm, I'm not concerned with log trucks, but I am concerned with flash trucks.
To me, to me, it's certainly the month, how long it's gonna be closed. FEMA won't fire with it, they need their oil. Are you gonna let oil trucks and stuff cross it and hope nothing happens? You know, I think that's not what we're gonna do. If not, then we need to get a price also for great temporary bridge deck replacement. If you want to get a steel structure, they throw all that, I, I don't know.
Ray, you, you said in a perfect world, we would do the mitigation.
Yes.
Well, we don't live in a perfect world. And we're probably as close to perfect as we're ever gonna get with the amount of money we might be able to get to mitigate this, this situation.
The mitigation would still be the same result, it would still be an eighty-twenty split.
True, but, but eighty-twenty and then, and then possibly half of that covered by the state, so...
So let's, but let's talk about fixing the bridge. Let's stop worrying about mitigation. What does, what does that mean? You're gonna rock some up so it doesn't wash away? Replace the deck? What level of mitigation are you talking about?
A full mitigation would be a hydraulic study, can tell you how, why that stand has to be. And then they would design new, a new abutment on either side to widen the area out. You're gonna end up with a stream bed and you're gonna have the, the, the bridge gonna be fifty feet wider than it is now, possibly, just explaining it to, to make it so there's area for the stream to fill the whole flood area. I, I don't know what the result's gonna be until there's a study done.
And, and you, you, and Brendan thinks that mitigation is, is what we should do.
That's the golden standard. That's like the golden, that's what you want to get because you don't want this thing to happen the next time you get another flood. We're gonna replace the deck. If we replace the deck, it's gonna be identical to the way it is now. It's gonna have exposed concrete beams and you're gonna have one more July tenth storm next September third and a big blow is gonna come down and smash the whole thing all over again. You're not gonna...
So there's phases to this, Dave, which is what you've, you've pointed out. The first one is what you and Ray just pointed out, get, get a temporary deck on there.
If you're gonna go for mitigation, if, if you're gonna go, we can probably get through the winter way it is, if you know, if you know next summer you're gonna be putting on a new deck.
Yeah, it's kinda late now.
But if you're gonna talk about mitigation, you're gonna be doing a whole structure, you're gonna talk two to three years, two years before you get a new bridge on there, at least, with all the permitting and everything else.
They'll be, if, if you're talking about water, they're, they're just not gonna allow you to do in the water like you think. I mean, all up to the halls right now, that's all the brakes are put on that, including coming out in the field.
It is possible with the right permitting, but it's time consuming.
Yeah, but A and R will get involved and say, you know, how often does it flood? It's only flooded twice in the last, you know, what, twelve years?
Twice in twelve years is pretty...
Yeah, well, they'll, they'll measure.
If they've got the damage enough, it'll need to have to be replaced. It would have to be replaced again now. That's, that's what mitigation will stop.
What do you say? What do you guys wanna do?
The, the cost estimate of repair versus total mitigation and then, that's my question, and then the funding mechanism. And, and lastly, will the, will the reimbursements FEMA state if it's a two- to three-year project to make this storm proof to the best of its ability? Are the reimbursements still attainable two to three years down the road?
They will add on time as needed to get it built properly if you fire, so apply for extensions because they know what area it's flooded and all the contractors are busy. You can't get anybody and it takes time.
I think it's important that you guys recorded the date of the flood so there's a history of, you know, of the event and the damage. So that's, you know, I think that'll be marked somewhere where you've already asked FEMA for this site so they're aware of, you know, what happened on whatever, what's the seventeenth of July?
FEMA's pushing for mitigation. They, they strongly suggest mitigation. Mitigation will have historic A and R, everybody else will be involved, it'll be a long-term pro, whole process and they do a cost analysis as part of that study. They'll, they'll come back and tell you...
And, and, yeah.
Why don't you give FEMA the end result for mitigation versus replacement? They will tell you what the cost is worth or not, if they're gonna fund it or not. They might say, nope, just do a deck replacement, we'll keep the cost ten, fifteen years down the road, one of the deck on it if we have to, it's cheaper. We don't know that until it's all done.
And, and if we go with the mitigation, you, in your plan, you would have a temporary deck on there probably in the spring.
I would think you would want to put a temporary deck on there to get people to be able to get their log trucks, their fuel, oil, everything else and all that.
So, so you'd be thinking of that next year, as soon as you can next year?
We could, we could put in for a request to get it done immediately if, block FEMA and see if that's something.
What, okay, so what do you need from us on that then?
A decision on which way you wanna go.
Just to get back to August's question on repair versus mitigation.
Yep.
We won't know how much mitigation will cost until we have it engineered. So we currently only have engineering plans for a, a deck replacement.
Do you have a number for that?
It's already done, it was forty-six thousand. Oh, I'm sorry. I think that's a different bridge, it was twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand?
Yes. So fifty percent there.
What did the deck include? New I-beams or, and then wood?
The deck is a precast, well, there's three possibilities in the plan that they came up with, but they're all precast, concrete with the pretension cables, depending on how you're gonna build it. If you put it in one whole place, extend it out there, you could pour it in place or you could pour it on site and once it cures, you put it on the deck or the bridge.
And that is, that will raise the weight limit to...
The twenty-four thousand pounds, but being able to be regular highway standards up to, I think it's the, it's the same as your standards for highway.
So does that lengthen the bridge out with the same length from going over it?
Correct. The, the abutments will stay the way they are if we just do a deck replacement, build it as is. Once you start moving an abutment, that's, that's total, that's mitigation, that's not building as was. The new deck would be different in only that the guardrails have been planted on the outside instead of where they are now, because it's about three or four feet of driving space. It'll be the same width if the guardrails were placed out, two feet further on each side of the bridge.
Is there, is there real danger that something might happen to the deck?
That would be pure speculation, but we were warned that it's cracked and once it cracks, the pretension cables are no longer pretensioned. A pretension deck means they tighten up the cable, they pour concrete around it, the concrete holds it in place. And that's what gives you this, that's what gives you the tensile strength. Once that's cracked or fractured, the cable doesn't have any concrete holding it anymore, so now it's just cable sitting in, you're driving on the cable instead of tension.
That was done by?
An engineer.
And you have that in paper?
Correct.
Then I'm not really so sure that we should be worrying about twenty-six thousand dollars. I'm a little nervous to, if, if somebody inadvertently took something over that they weren't supposed to and then all the residents would be affected by that. If it's known that something's cracked and that this...
There is a poster, there is a steel poster for twelve thousand pounds, that's all I could find, but it's, it's rated, Derek has, they're estimating, I think it safely handles sixteen thousand pounds, which isn't much.
But, but for us to sit here and say, okay, a, a full deck, even, so you can start the mitigation all you want to, but a full deck replacement will up, it will gain a lot of security to the bridge for twenty-six thousand dollars, I'm not sure that we should be waiting to ha, see how that's funded.
The twenty-six thousand dollars is just for the design of the deck.
Oh, it's not the deck?
No, the deck replacement, you're talking two, three hundred thousand.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, no, that's just the design.
Okay, I need to be in the bridge business.
Okay, so now if you started to go down the road of mitigation, what do you think, what do you think that number speculation is looking like?
Seven or eight hundred thousand.
And, and we would be responsible for somewhere around, well...
Ten.
Ten percent? Seventy thousand dollars?
If it spans fiscal years, how, how does that funding affect the budget, Weathersfield? If it's a two-to-three-year project, is it, is it a loan? Is it, is it coming from the highway fund?
My, my assumption is, I'm not, like, you're wrong on this, my assumption is you take out a loan for so many years return and then once the work is done, you put all our paperwork in, people can just, the money, we can pay the loan off. That's my guess.
That, that's what I heard at the beginning of this, was, was that it had to be a loan.
Okay.
That's how that would work. So when we take out a loan, a payment's not due for twelve months. So by that time, we would be paying them a loan with FEMA reimbursements. And Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, but FEMA did tell us that they could reimburse us as invoices come into the project. So if we...
Ends of project is completed, so the road repairs are all done. Once we get that documentation into them, they can start giving us money. I don't know how that works. If you have an engineering thing done, maybe they could reimburse us for that, but you'd have to get more answers.
And FEMA's, FEMA is pushing for mitigation on this, so they...
On anything you do on a flood, on a road that floods and washes out, they want it done right so they're not paying money again later on.
Okay, so that doesn't equate to approval from them.
Correct.
We still have that hurdle.
So to me, if you guys say you want a cost analysis done for mitigation, you go ahead and go through that process, you hire the engineer, it's gonna be twenty, thirty thousand dollars, whatever it is for the engineer to do the study, come up with the ideas, and then FEMA will decide whether it is worth doing or not, whether, whether or not they're gonna fund it. At that point, we're gonna have a decision, you're gonna get a bridge deck or you're gonna get a whole new bridge.
And how long would that process take to get to that decision?
At least two years.
To get to that decision?
I'm gonna say it's gonna be about sixteen...
The engineering alone would take that long to get to that decision?
Before you get a decision, it's probably gonna be at least a year, two year and a half. You're gonna have to, you have to rent, you have to get somebody to design it. And if they can design it in winter time, fine, but it's probably gonna be next fall before you can have the design. So it's not gonna be a year just for the design.
Well, that, that kind of throws a hitch in, if you go in with, with mitigation and getting a, a temporary deck on it. You're, you're not even at the approval stage yet, come spring.
If you're gonna go down that path, the cost should include immediately putting on temporary deck as soon as possible. If you're not, you're gonna send out a bid and you're gonna buy a bridge deck, they're gonna come in next summer and put it on.
But, but what does as soon as possible look like? Twenty, twenty-six? For the, for the temporary bridge deck?
You tell me right now that's the way you wanna go, we're gonna get a price and figure out the cost and, and get it out to bid and find the temporary bridge deck to put on.
What is the board's, what, what is the board taking on this? Who wants to start?
I'm getting a headache.
I, 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 I know.
My hand's turning purple. I thought the deck was twenty-six thousand.
You're not doing mitigation, you're not doing mitigation by just saying you wanna pursue it, you're gonna get all of the debt. And then a decision would be made, once the cost analysis and all the studies are done, it'll tell you if you replace this bridge deck, it'll be as was.
That's all for one bridge.
If you do mitigation, you're like...
We still got two more to go, yeah. I'm listening to you right now.
That's all you're doing.
Well, well then, we need to, we need to know. That, that's the way I look at it. I mean, we, we could sit here and make a decision, let's just fix the top of the bridge, but if that's not the best thing to do, then we oughta get the, we oughta get the data.
You're gonna send out a bid to fix the top of the bridge or you're gonna send out a bid to hire an engineer to do mitigation, cost analysis, study.
What's the board wanna do? Deck or mitigation?
One final question.
Go ahead.
What was the age of this bridge and have there's, has there been past damage of bridges in this place?
Yes.
Yes.
The age, the, the abutments are nineteen sixty-eight and I think the bridge deck was replaced early eighties and high reneursive damage. Every time there's high water that hits the bridge and you're flooding, rocks are hitting those concrete beams.
It seems to me that the hundred-year storms are coming about every ten years and it seems to me that if there's tremendous opportunity for reimbursement, the risk is low and that getting this repaired to, getting it mitigated as they've recommended would provide a long-term solution and you wouldn't be revisiting this with major storms.
And, and I, I think we need to at least have the decision as to whether FEMA's gonna foot the bill for that, which is that stat.
So you do the mitigation, at that point, they're gonna have the cost analysis, all the source data, all crap.
Correct.
And they're gonna be able to say, bridge deck replacement or mitigation and they'll approve it if that's...
And that's fine, I'm, I'm good with that. I think that's, personally, I think that's where we need to be.
Correct.
I'm a little concerned about the timetable though for two years.
I am, mine too.
Restricting people to twelve thousand pounds, so I would also ask you, Ray, to have a sign or two signs, one at either end, completely made, cost money, I don't care, that actually say, "Bridge restricted to twelve thousand pounds." And I think, yeah, I know, but I don't like cardboard or something.
It's not hard to steal, but to steal away from the site as well.
I'd, I'd go do a different, and that, that is what you were saying about putting in an emergency need for that temporary structure on there as soon as possible. If we maybe get that in the spring, that would be awesome, you know, regardless of which way it ends up going in the end.
Because of the...
So you can even rent temporary bridge decks.
Yes.
So there, there's a possibility that...
So we have some options here.
And slap on the temporary steel bridge deck.
What are people gonna do this winter though for fuel, oil?
Or let's say there's a fire. I mean, I think, I think, I think there are two separate things. Fix it, but what about now?
The fire department will have to take, I've already been to conversation with it's risk analysis, if they're gonna save something or save a life, they're gonna go over that bridge. If an oil tank has to go across it, just like the Mean Road Bridge, that's rated, rated for sixteen thousand pounds, they have a special overweight permit and they only load enough oil to go and fill the house. They're not showing up in twenty-five hundred...
Yeah, they're not the first delivery on the, on the daily route.
These are our emergencies. We, we don't want people grabbing a log truck to go across that...
All right, so you have an answer now on where we're at with the, do you wanna, you wanna motion on this?
I would like to have a documented bill, that'd be awesome.
I, I what? I, I, E-I-E-I-O.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to do the cost analysis with engineering for mitigation. More word that differently, that's fine, but...
It'd be to send out a bid?
Yes, to send out a bid.
Go ahead, your second.
Well, that'd be an RFB for Scottney Basin Bridge. We gotta identify the site.
Scottney, okay.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do we want that to include a, a temporary deck or we wanna handle that separately across that bridge, unintended?
But I think that is separate, though, because I think this is specifically for getting the...
FEMA mitigation, yes.
I think when you go back to FEMA and you tell them it's going to be X amount of months or a year or whatever, we need a temporary deck. And that gets included, cost of the replacement.
Okay.
I think they've already mentioned things, you know, other towns have temporary bridges.
And, and we would, and, and we would basically take a loan for that?
Right.
To, to get that done as well?
There are places, there are factories that...
Okay, I got it. So, yeah, we'd, so we'd have that, it would be separate, and it would, it would be documented, we'd have it, and, and we might get revert, reverse, we'll be able to get reversed for...
Maybe it's a miracle, and some company bids, and says they can get it done in two months.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the second one, Little Escutney Bridge. What do we need here?
There is an upper wing wall, the bridge abutment, and a lower wing wall, all on the side of one oh six. To fix as was, they're going to have to design a plan to get underneath the wing walls and the abutment, and put in some kind of a form in concrete to replace all the washed-out material, and then riprap the front of it. That's going to be as was. Again, if you want a mitigation plan, you're, you're talking, this one's going to be even more money than the other. Because the bridge, the road, the river comes down, it's sharp, S-turn in two places. It's not wide enough.
So this one you're suggesting, just...
I'm suggesting as was. It's a, it's a bridge that, um, easily people could go around another way if something did happen. It's not, I mean, it's a main roof, people have little scut, for shortcut a lot, but the other bridge is only one way to now. We're living that covered.
Right, there's a dear difference. Brandon?
Yeah, so I think we need to advertise an RFQ, um, for engineering to replace the bridge back to the way, to the way that it was.
Repair, repair and replace?
I'm just there, I'm sorry.
Here.
This bridge is not taking it the same as the Escutney Basin Bridge. This, this, this bridge, um, deals strictly with, uh, trucks that are cheating to come in over weight limits. Um, that's what deteriorates this bridge. The water, the way the river is acting right now is, while there's an exit underneath this bridge, the water is shedding with the two other spots that are coming over the bank out into the fields.
It's a giant flood plain. All the water hits this one little bottleneck, can't go anywhere else, so cordial across the flat, it'll flood there first. It has a, it has a natural flood plain that it builds over, and it doesn't really damage the bridge. It pretty much just washes out some of the gravel, really.
But this is repair on the abutments?
Yes.
Which is necessary?
Correct. So after Irene, they went in there, the town went in there and put some rocks and stuff up against the abutments to protect them. But it was just a, it was a patch. All that washed out.
Okay, so...
Undercut even more.
But, so in this case, though, we just need RFQ, you said?
Yeah, we'll obtain three quotes, and then we take...
And this is, this is engineering, or is this?
This is engineering.
It, it might be worth it, and I know you, I don't know the old or the not, but I don't know whether or not, I haven't really looked at it. I don't know whether the river is chewing into where that rope swing is that will endanger the width of Little Escutney Road.
When it does, we'll know exactly where to put the bridge next time. And handle it straight.
This is why we like having professionals in the room.
No, but I'm just going to tell you, it's going to be, it's going to be riprap there. It won't take only a few loads, which I know where that exists.
There is, there is a bunch of riprap on that bank already.
Yes.
And it is monitored.
Yes.
But the, the water naturally goes across the whole field.
Okay, but for us right now, it's a matter of, uh, a motion to authorize the RFQ for repair back to, for the repair back to what it was. Do I hear that motion?
Yes.
Do I hear second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion?
Until you get the address in, right? Little Escutney Bridge, yep.
All set? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And third is Upper Falls Covered Bridge. What do we need there?
This is the big one, I think. I think it's going to take a lot of machinery, because the length of wherever the stone is going to be dropped, and you're sure not going to dump that down about a fifty or seventy-five foot and hope some excavator catches it.
I'm starting to see zeros flashing past my face here as we get into this third thing. We're, we're, we're... This is going to be, I mean, this is going to be scary.
Too bad they couldn't have a big excavator, like a three hundred or something, sit down on the river and pull some of the rock out of there, and then put it on the bank.
That was my thought, just like Gurney did with Irene.
They're not going to let you.
Why, they did before.
Well, they're not going to let you.
Not again, not now? But it's named, it has a name.
A and R.
What do we need?
It's, it's repair, because this isn't, without replacing a million-dollar bridge. It's repair the abutments, right, Ray?
Yeah, the abutments are fine. It's riprap protecting the abutment.
Yep.
On the side towards one thirty-one, there was a big stone riprap wall put up. It was a little steeper than, up an angle than it should have been, so, um, I'm guessing it's a... So this is like the top view of the abutment, the river comes through here. You know what I mean? It's like looking down on top of the abutment, so the covered bridge is here. So the river comes down, it hits the abutment, and it causes a swirl. Then it cuts into the riverbank, and then goes behind the abutment and washes out the bridge. The riprap was put in at an angle like this, but it was such a steep angle that it still caused somewhat of a swirl. So it got rid of all that stone, and now the abutment's exposed. So we're trying to design it to be a steeper, or a less of an angle, hide into the bank better, and has a key cut on the shore of the river where big rocks like these tables are put in, in place, and then stacked on top of like they did on Route one oh six. Um, I did call the state rivers manager, and there is a preliminary permit allowed already for coming in off the dirt side, driving across the river, the excavator setting it down in there, making a deck, and then having a second excavator or crane up top that lowers the stones down in a bucket, big bucket, as needed, and they can dump it. So there is a plan already in place on how to do it. Uh, we just need the engineer to come up with the actual design of the riprap wall, where to key it in, and how to key it in. So whoever in a bid knows they're bidding on the exact same thing.
Okay.
Who is the person, Rip, Rip River, A and R?
I talked to Scott Jensen from the river, he's the river manager.
What do we need?
So both sides of the road would be done, uh, because today it's determined that the other side will be covered and it should be fixed as well.
What do we need?
So we just need, you know, authorization to advertise the RFQ for this project, and then once these estimates come back, we'll bring it back to the board to review.
Make a motion, we approve the, is RFP?
RFQ.
What does Q stand for?
Quote. Yeah, request for quote. Procurement.
Yes, for Upper Falls Covered Bridge Project.
Yep.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion?
If anybody has any further questions or concerns or comments on these, let me know. We can do a site visit, try to show you what's going on, see if you understand it better, just to eat your own mind.
Pick me up, I'd like to go up, look at the basin with you.
Can you add me to that list?
When, when it's convenient for you.
Yeah, let me know. Uh, tomorrow?
Sure. Uh, ten o'clock, I got a customer coming in, I'll be a few hours with him after that, I should be okay.
Send me a text when you're available, and I'll let you know if I can be down there.
Okay, that sounds good. It doesn't have to be tomorrow, whenever you're, like I said.
I am available tomorrow.
Okay, good, thank you, Ray. Okay, we have motion on the floor, motion in the second. Any, uh, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And last but not least, I see a Perkinsville Dry Hydrant. Now, is this also something FEMA, or is, uh, repair, or is this, um, something we're doing?
So right now, we're waiting for the preliminary results, right?
Correct, it is given image, it is flat image for the lifetime.
Okay.
So it's added to repair list.
Is it usable now, or not, really? The big one, the fifty westbound motor is not down?
The thousand gallon pump is not pumping.
Wow.
This is the one that's over the bank at the bridge in Perkinsville?
Correct. Now, just as a refresher, there is a hydrant at the road with a control panel. There's a pipe that goes all the way down to the river. In, at the river, there's a roughly six foot by six foot by twenty foot deep basin. It has a straw pump, looks like a big straw, with a pump on the end of it. There's an inlet that comes in from the river, collects water, fills the tank, and the pump pumps it up to the hydrant, electric hydrant. Um, what has happened is, in the river, in the inlet, a huge piece of ledge has launched itself in front of the inlet pipe, and a bunch of debris has been stuck in behind it, so the pipe is plugged solid. And all the riprap is gone on the riverbank right in front of the concrete, um, structure. So now, standing in the river, you can look up twenty feet to see a huge concrete box fully exposed to the next storm. So the goal is to first clean up the inlet, clean up the tank, get the pump running and usable, and then do the riprap. I would strongly suggest getting an estimate or figuring out how to add an outlet line to the bottom of the tank, because right now, we have to suck it out with a, with a, a back truck, there's no way to shut off the water flow without a huge safety issue of trying to get into the river and block that pipe. So if we could get a second outlet at the bottom of the tank that goes downstream, we could open up a valve twice a year, let the water come in, walk, walk back out, and flush itself. Just, just an option at this time to resolve this. But, rest acts, we just need to fix the pump, clean out...
Just, just one second. So what do we need from you on this, for, for you?
We're waiting for preliminary results right now.
Uh, Dana's Construction built the tank.
Okay.
And they're really familiar with it, so I called them to give me a budgetary number.
Okay, go to...
I want to get the pump working as soon as possible, that's my goal.
Well, I know this will be like reimbursable, but my first question is, is it worth it? We've had nothing but headaches with this. I mean, we've had like electrical issues with it, where it's like an on-call thing, so you just turn the thing on for like one second, it's like a three hundred dollar bill or something. Um, and I'm just, you know, I don't know.
The problem thing has been resolved.
Okay.
Um, the issues we've had is sand gets into the tank, no way to clean it out. I can't tell you how they cleaned it out. Um, it's not, it's not done that way anymore. Now we have a back truck once a year trying to get as much sand out as it can. I think to mitigate that problem, this would be the time to try to add a drain of some kind to be able to flush the tank out. Just that would be part of the FEMA thing, that'd be on, on site part, that'd be like a site bid. This is the time to do it, I believe.
Um, so you don't need any action from us on this right now?
Yeah, we do.
You do?
We did an RFQ for, oh, sorry.
I don't think we did very near, I thought we were reading.
You're right, I'm waiting for the number to come back, but we will need an RFQ.
Eventually, yeah.
No, we need to send this one up to bid.
Right.
Um, because it'll, it'll probably exceed ten thousand dollars, I think.
Yes.
And just remember, on these projects, this isn't through our procurement policy, this is through FEMA's. So we really need to, we can't leave any policies as we go through this.
I mean, strictly speaking, our policy tells us that if the service, like, if you need to clear out a bid, but if you want FEMA reimbursement, you better clear out a bid. You know, we don't, our policy, your policy is shot, we're following your policy.
Okay, keep an eye on that for us, make sure we, do what you need to do here.
Well, we almost got, we received some conflicting information, and we had to keep pressing to make sure that, yes, we have to use the federal, uh, procurement policy, and, and we do. So, which means the turnaround times are going to be a little bit longer, but we'll get reimbursed.
Mike?
Yes.
So when is this, when are we supposed to be able to hear about when these results are?
It's supposed to be there, um, Thursday. You couldn't make it, it'll be there today, it's a protocol for the meeting when the results are ready.
Okay, so we're expecting it right away?
Yes, I want this done, they need water in the village, they have fires, they don't have it right now.
Well, that was, when Dave brought up whether it was worth it or not, Mike, that was going to be my question. If we don't, then what?
That thing was designed to build and drive a thousand gallons a minute up to make this street. So up to school, basically. So if you don't, then you're not going to have a water supply for the village.
Well, and, but, but Dave brings up another point, which is a very valid point. When there's a fire, and you don't know when that's going to happen, you go down and flick the switch. The damn thing needs to work. Not, you know, if the power's out, or it's full of sand, or there's a rock on it, or something, right, Dave? I mean, it's got to work.
That's why I'm strongly recommending mitigating the, the cleanup problem. There's several options. You put a valve in to shut the water off from coming in, and then reach down and vacuum it all out to the above, or you can put it out, where you can open up a valve and it'll block itself out.
Well, we can look at that stuff as we, as we start getting along, yep. All right, so that takes care of that. Um, Village Wastewater Committee Draft Policy. Everybody had a chance to review this? John, have you seen it?
Did you just send this this afternoon?
Yeah, I...
I didn't see this over the weekend, right?
It was not in your...
Okay.
It was good, Eric, you just didn't read it.
Oh, I read the whole thing, believe me. Yeah, I didn't get my email.
And this is just a draft policy, I just put something together as a place to start from, um, so please feel free to, to go through it and let me know if there's anything to change or improve.
Um, I just said one comment. Um, I scanned through it, and I also scanned through the attachment you provided, the, uh, the, um, organizing Village Wastewater Solutions. And I think we probably need more time, um, to review this policy than tonight.
Absolutely.
But I also, just in looking through it, and, and even just the first page or two of the state guidance, I don't think the policy is nested with the state guidance. And that leads me to some questions about, um, we just don't want to put our cart in front of our horse when you start thinking about forming a committee, committee comp, uh, composition, uh, timeline. And then one of the, one of the comments in the document you sent, uh, from the state, it even referenced your town plan. And I know having, it, it's been a moment, but since I read the town plan, I think the town plan is a few years old.
Yes.
Twenty seventeen.
I know in the town plan, it, it did mention something about not a need for an Escutney, Escutney, um, wastewater project. So I guess we, I think there's some things that have to be reconciled. And I, and I'll leave, I'll, I'll leave my thoughts with just a question, which is, does Weathersfield need a master plan? You know, obviously, you have to address your residents' wastewater problems in some fashion or other, whether it's, whether it's they're on their own, whether it's a, a town solution. But I think that having a vision for the future of development, whether it's, uh, Escutney or, or Perkinsville Village, where do we want development to occur? Because if that's something we want, that's going to drive and have to be nested with the work of a committee. And so I, I just think we kind of might need to pump the brakes and, and just, uh, really thoughtfully assess the state guidance before a policy is made for a, a committee or a commission, because I think you used both words i- in the draft policy, so I wasn't clear on that either. But that, that's just my initial thoughts. I haven't had adequate time to really review this policy.
Um, you, you mentioned the town plan. The town plan does, um, uh, clearly state, uh, to focus density on the village areas first. Um, which is, um, yeah, that's, that's, that... We, we've known that for quite some time. State guidance, I'm not, I, I, I think the state guidance is somewhat consistent with that at this point in time. John, go ahead.
The only reason the committee was even, uh, brought up was when Honor Creek was here six months ago. More than that, anyway, they were here. They, they've recommended that, that a committee may be a way to take some of the burden off the select board. The, the committee isn't designed to make decisions or give Honor Creek guidance. The way I envision it, and maybe I got it wrong, it's more of a funnel to get information back to you guys. If you don't want to have a committee, that's fine. I got other things to do, so does the other people. Uh, but it's going to require more of your folks' time to, to sit through when, when Honor Creek is, when they start getting progress reports. And that, that's the purpose of the committee. We're not making decisions, we're not ramrodding anything down anybody's throat. And I can tell you right now, I don't have any bias one way or the other. Where I live, I certainly am not concerned. But Perkinsville in particular, we've been talking about this for years. And finally, a vehicle came in to allow us to at least do a comprehensive study, and that, that would say, here's three options, here's what we think the budgets are, and, and that's what the end is.
And that's, and that's the...
Or a future board decides to pursue it with additional grants and funding, and the decision is years down the road.
Well, and that's the end game. And that was the other thing I was going to say to August, that, that's the whole purpose of this study right now, is to gather the information. It's, and we're, the only decision that's been made so far is to hire a, a engineering firm to do a study, period.
Then we have a grant for...
Period, yeah, which is paid for.
That's covered, that, that part's covered.
Yeah.
It's not a design, it's not a design at all.
Well, it might, it might, it might have some...
The potential problems down the road, and, and Perkinsville in particular, I mean, are you fracturing this to help three or four people? No, you're fracturing this to enhance the community. And you pointed it out, that the, the town plan encourages development within the...
The villages.
The villages.
First, focus on the villages.
Right now, if, if a system fails in Perkinsville, they got a really big problem. They're, you know, I don't need to elaborate.
Brandon?
I just have a, a couple of things. First, I wanted to respond, uh, to August about the policy. So generally, I was looking for a decision on the policy tonight. We usually have three readings. So there'd be a first reading, the board has opportunity to look at the policy and suggest any changes. And then in the next reading, those changes would be incorporated into the policy. Um, and it could go three or four readings, depending on the policy. So I wasn't looking for a decision tonight. The second thing is, I looked through, I do see where it says commission and community, and I call it US for that, I use the Parks and Recreation Commission template as, as a template and I didn't change that, so that would be one of the things that I'll change for the second reading. I did look through this and I did incorporate the state guidance into the policy, specifically, the state guidance recommends to include a member of the select board planning commission or other town official staff in the committee, and I did include that under the organization of the committee. So each committee will have three to five members consisting of a select board member or planning commission member and other town residents. I would just be looking for suggestions on what else to incorporate from this into this, because I didn't really, it says establish a town planning fund that will allow you to match the grant funds, but I don't see how that's, how that relates to the committee.
So we'll have an opportunity over the next two or three meetings to review, provide feedback.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because like, like one, one thing, I have a history of policy review, so I won't waste too much time here, but one little topic here, five, this policy shall amend or replace any provisions of any policy of the town of Weathersfield in effect at the time of enactment of this amended policy governing any activity included in this amended policy. So we have to be, I think we have to be real careful with our wording, and there's a couple other areas in here, and what I'll do is I'll be, I'll give you thoughtful feedback in writing, so I'm not wasting time, but there's a couple of things that we kind of make sure that any committee doesn't have authority beyond the scope of what we're asking them to do.
Mm-hmm. No, I agree with that. Okay, so, I mean, we are creating a policy, so this would be, this would be considered first reading?
Yes, and I, and the engineering firm did kind of, like, back when they came to us and presented, I think we should have already had a committee, isn't that what the engineer was saying to us when they came and presented at the select board meeting? So it would be nice to stay on track with the, with the six week schedule if possible.
Six, what, six week schedule for what?
Well, it would require three readings, so it would be-
Okay, okay.
In the course of six weeks, so I'll like August how he'll submit his recommendations in writing, any board member that has recommendations about the policy can also submit them in writing.
Now, my, my question would, would actually jump away from the policy, which, I'm the chair, I can do that, I guess, and that would go to the appointments, do you want to still do the appointments on this tonight, or you want to hold them off?
I think the policy should be in place prior to that, that's my thinking.
Fair enough, so, and we need some more names, anyway, and we can work on that, John.
The only section that I had a little bit of an issue with was the frequency of the meetings and the order, which should be as necessary or something, I think you're down, I'm not looking at it, once a month, every two weeks or something like that?
It's just a place to start.
I know, I know. That's the reason I like as necessary.
It speeds up people that are concerned.
You know, they, they got to be more, like any other meeting, the minutes have to be developed, no lack of stuff.
Dave?
I'm not sure I'm going to favor a policy at all, I recall Otter Creek saying that they wanted to use representatives as more like liaisons between the town and their engineering firm if needed. I don't want to hold hostage to say that you got to meet every two weeks and you got to meet these deadlines for this poor committee, like any other volunteer, that's what they are, they're just people that are interested in serving and I-
Yeah, I like, well, John just got done saying that, you know, as needed, which is going to be more than enough for that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And you're right, Dave, that's exactly what they, they thought it was a good vehicle.
Yes, they wanted the person to the face rather than them who are engineers.
Yep.
That's what they wanted.
I was, sorry.
Go ahead, lady.
Brandon, did you want to say something first?
You can go first.
So I was just going to bring it back to kind of what, what Otter Creek was, I guess I'm probably saying I'm, I'm hearing the same thing, is that they really were, were genuinely looking for people within the community that just wanted to either hear what was going on, make some inputs, and it would be nice if it was people of the community that were, you know, that were there, and, and we would have more than just Otter Creek bringing us information, that there would be some input. So I don't know how formal this was supposed to be, and I guess maybe I need some clarification as to how we went from something being more of a, what they were presenting as more of an informal situation to we're going, becoming too formal.
I agree. I think, I think, I think they were looking for informal dungarees, they're looking for more people that would be-
There's an address code in here.
Yes, they were looking for people to be able to respond to questions, not just them as the company.
Maybe with at least some level of expertise, I'm not, the panel we've got right now, I'm not bragging, I worked wastewater for the last twenty, thirty years, like, at least I'll know what they're talking about in the nomenclature.
Dave?
So it sounds like you're trying to go, or one person suggesting you go towards clearly defined guidelines as opposed to a structured policy? They're both policies, but I mean, the guidelines just tell people what they're doing, what their job is, what their goals are, and what their restrictions are.
And I don't see this, what's here's right now, as being all that different from anything else with any other committee or that we have, or policy, and with the exception of, yeah, I don't think we need to tell you guys that you got to meet every two weeks, I don't think that's necessary, I think that's, that's figured out within the committee, I think they can set their own schedule, but that's, you know, changes, that's the reason for doing the readings of the document.
So this, the guidance, this workbook here, it does say that best practice is to have a committee formally created or endorsed by the select board, so it's not coming from the engineers, it's coming from, from this guidance. This guidance is a little bit different than the wastewater feasibility, but it still has similarities.
And, and I mean, this isn't tying anybody's hands, it's just, is it, John, does it, do you feel that ties to anybody's hands in any way? Or whatever, no?
It is your community input.
Yeah.
So it's one way of getting input from residents.
I heard that it seems to be becoming something more than it was intended to become.
Yes.
Yes.
Andrea Burri here, I wanted to add just a little bit to that, I have the contract, the engineering service, I'm sorry about her, and it does say that they need to have the liaison person identified in order to consult-
Consult, consult, consult.
To define and clarify what are their requirements for the project, including objectives, constraints, base.
August, what happened?
Elon Musk is fickle with his Starlink.
Yes.
Frozen.
It is way up on top of the roof, though, I can guarantee that.
At TDS?
Oh, we have Starlink, satellite, yeah, TDS.
We need a satellite to come over.
TDS was like a fourteen point four modem, you know.
We can, we have the Starlink.
Did we lose everything?
I'm rebooting.
It might, it might not be Starlink, it might be us.
I don't know, I'm on the internet for a just one.
See?
Well, we're, we're in the first reading on this, anyway, and it's, it's not a very difficult thing to deal with, like I said, it's not really tying anything up, it just-
I don't think that was Starlink, I think that was our internet.
Perfect.
Or it was a combination of both.
We, we didn't sign the papers, we didn't get the, we didn't pay the bill.
Yeah, pretty much. Anyway, just to reiterate, I think it is important for guidelines or policies for any community to do this.
And at this point, we're, we're just going to be bringing, we're going to read this over and bring our input for the next reading.
Yeah, and I think we've already made some changes, you know, they don't have to meet every, they can figure that out for themselves.
And I think the reason the engineer and the state will say this committee is best practice because the meetings are very long, right? Like the engineer, I think they're like an hour or two hours long, so it would consume most of the select board's time if we were to do it at this table, which we could still do, maybe we could have special-
No, John wants to do this.
Okay.
Well, that was, I was just going to say, that is what I do remember, is that was why they were doing this, is so that we weren't going to be sitting for two hour meetings, unless we chose to do it and join.
Andrea, I think our, either our internet froze or your internet froze, can you hear us?
I can hear you now, completely froze.
You left off, or at least we, we heard everything up until the engineer spoke of services, and then you started reading a couple of things and then you froze.
Well, I was just basically saying we do, according to their contract, we needed to identify somebody as the representative to make, whether it's middle round decisions or guiding on the direction without having to bring the, the full select board together, whether that's the planning commission or this committee, but that should be part of that policy for sure.
Look into that, Brendan.
Yeah, I'll answer the questions.
Okay. So we are looking at this as just a first reading, this doesn't get adopted tonight, we have to go through three readings, so like Brendan was saying, it would be four weeks out for the next, right?
Yeah, it would be four weeks out if, when appointments can be made if the policy's approved.
At four weeks, it wouldn't be six, because tonight's the first one, it's two and then two, it would only be four more.
Yep, but if there, but if there are revisions made, then you have to continue that on for, so somebody could comment on the revisions.
Okay.
And if those revisions are in on the third reading, basically.
Yeah, you'd have to continue from that point, yeah, I think that's the, okay. All right, well, good, so, so we're going to continue on to a second reading at this point and move on on the agenda. Town manager update.
All right, I just have a couple of things. We have our health insurance, our health insurance rates came back. So it looks like overall the gold plan from MVP is increasing by twelve point four four percent. So what that means is if all plans stay the same next year, in 2024, the cost increase would be twenty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars. A deductible decreased by two hundred dollars for a single and four hundred dollars for a family, and that's what the gold plan only. At this, at this point, we're going to be looking at all of our options and we'll assemble analysis for the board to review in the next meeting or the, or the meeting after that. We're going to look at Blue Cross Blue Shield and MVP and compare all of the different plans that each has, and we'll visit the HSA and look at what it would look like if we did an HRA instead, so it's a couple of, a couple of things we're looking at right now.
Are you done with your report?
I still have the rest of my report.
You want to come back to it?
Whatever you want to do, I had a question about healthcare, but if you want to let go, go.
Why don't you?
Go with it.
Healthcare is such a big-
Take a question. So last year, when we went through this, we were told that there was, whatever the rate was, you know, on the plans, but then there was like a surprise at like five of midnight when deductibles changed or whatever, so, which really threw a curve into everything, and it was too late. Were there, so, outside of the twelve point four four percent rate increase, were there any other changes anywhere in the plan? Because that's what's going on now, you know, they'll, they'll, the healthcare providers don't exactly tell you what the plans are until like after a while, which is very confusing for the employer and the employees, so.
I have this straight up comparison for both years, I'll be, I only looked at, I just got it today, so I only looked at the deductible and the, and the costs for each type of plan for what we currently have, I think we're going to look at all of our options.
So when you mentioned like single or something like that, I mean, I would ask that you, I know what the school does, they have three plans, single, two-person, and family plan. They, they carry the Blue Cross, but I think you should do the same thing and be careful of what you, or you're going to write down.
Well, that, when you pick a plan like platinum plan, gold plan, or silver plan, there's four options on, on these.
That's what MVP, Blue Cross doesn't work that way.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Do you know those jerks?
I have them upstairs.
I don't ever hear colors in school.
Yeah, I, I think it's the same, because what you're talking about is actually the fee structure, and there's four sets of fee structures for each plan, and that's typically how they do it, is a single, they do it a single with child, they do it to adult, and they do a family plan. That's the four that you typically see on every plan, they offer those.
All, my whole point is only, is very simple, we got an announcement of some rate or rate increase or decrease or frozen, whatever it was, but the plan changed in addition to the rate.
Haven't had a chance to, I, I just saw it for the first time today, too.
I know, I'm just saying, and I'm glad that he said there was like a deductible went down or something, I mean, but there was a time when we went through the whole budget process and then, you know, everybody was saying, oh, great, healthcare, we only went up like two percent, we don't need to talk about anything, and all of a sudden, the deductible went bizarre.
When Obamacare was first passed and we started looking at these, the platinum plan was a hundred dollar deductible and the gold plan was two hundred or two fifty. Those are, those, I, I think the platinum plan is now eight fifty and the gold plan is now fourteen hundred for a single. And, and those are things that change, too, whether it's a single or a family.
I actually think that the plan that the town is using is five thousand dollar deductible and we cover much of the deductible.
Only that, only the one, only those.
Six hundred.
See?
Yeah, only the one. There's, we offer the platinum plan, too, they have a choice between which one they take. And that's what I thought you meant when you said two plans, because we, we offer the platinum plan and we offer a, a high deductible plan, and, and they get to choose between which one they want.
But the town picked up the entire deductible, so the only other thing that we need to pay attention to is, the healthcare runs on a calendar year, we do not, right?
Yes.
That's a big deal.
So there is going to be a twelve thousand dollar difference between January first to June thirtieth that we'll have to make up, basically.
And we need to keep that in mind moving into the next budget, that, 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 you're going to see a jump of something, put a contingency in there for that.
I don't know, I'm just, well, the year before, though, it didn't do this, it didn't go up twelve and a half percent.
Yeah, I know.
Exactly. It's difficult to predict. So in the next meeting, I'll have both the 2023 and the 2024 MVP and Blue Cross Blue Shield plans, and then a report and analysis of healthcare right now.
Can you just send out to?
I, I, I was just going there, Dave, what I was going to do is I was going to ask him if he could get ahold of MVP and Blue Cross and have those sheets sent or, or get them downloaded for all of us, so everybody has them.
I have them upstairs, so I can just scan it inside of the thing to you.
Okay, I like, I like them in color.
Oh, my God.
It makes a, it makes a difference.
I was going in a different lane, I was, I was going to suggest that you make everybody that works for the town that collects healthcare aware of what's going on, so they know right now that, that healthcare's twelve point four four percent up and a decision or whatever is coming up and we've got to figure out what we're, we're all going to do, because I don't want to hold anybody in the surprise world.
Yep.
Don't want to do that.
Sounds good. All right.
I also don't want to throw a, a blanket of fear over this either.
No.
You know, so. Brendan, I keep, you, you still have more to do within your, any questions for Brendan on healthcare at this point? Anything anybody wants on that?
All right.
I would distribute maybe some of those sheets either, either to the department heads or employees as they wish, so that they can take a look, even they have access to that stuff, let them see what's going on, too. Go ahead, Brendan.
There's a little bit of delay on the fire department, the West Hall is still fire department replacement project, but the work didn't commence this morning, so I think that'll take, you know, another week to two weeks to complete. The hazard tree was removed from the Martin Royal Hall parking lot, and we decided to move toward the Mark McEnery Street to bury the propane tank and connect it to the generator as scheduled for the November. Our first quarter finance report will be given on October sixteenth, and that will consist of the first three months of the general fund, county fund, and solid waste fund. On October twenty-sixth and October twenty-seventh, I'll be attending Vermont Town and City Managers Association Conference, I'm in Sherwood Bush, this will be the first one that I attend as a board director for the BTCMI. So that'll be happening on the twenty-seventh. Topics this year include stormwater management, the local legislative panels, justice equity, diversity, and inclusion, lessons from Vermont's neighbors, and this, and the business meeting and presentation of GMP. And I'll take an vacation October seventeenth to the twenty-fourth. Just wanted to give a heads up, I'm not going anywhere, I'll be out in Springfield, just getting ready for the winter and doing some work on the house, so my phone will still be on it. and doing some work on the house. So my phone will still be on it.
Call him every half hour.
Twenty minutes.
Well, if we all take thirty-minute schedules, we can, you know, be on the phone about every six minutes.
I'd rather have an electric prod.
Yeah, can we get one of those? We got, we got ARPA money. We could all have one.
That's all from my town manager update.
All right. Thank you, Brendan. Any questions for the town manager?
I just had one question.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Brendan let me know that my predecessor, Paul Tillman, had been on the solid waste board.
Yep.
And I'd be, for future order of business, I'd be delighted to, to take on that duty.
We, we could actually take that up under any other business after we do the warrants. If, if, if you're willing to.
He was.
Yeah, he was. If you're willing to discuss that at that point in time, or we could decide at that point in time whether to put it on a future agenda item.
I want to do it right now.
Well, it's not any other business right now. It, it, it is appointments, but it's, that's really not in the appointments because this is a board appointment. So we'll do it under any other business. Appointments. You see Brian Bosenberg for the planning commission. However, that really needs to wait until the next meeting based on my notice that I gave, that people have until next Thursday end of business to submit their name for this position. And I don't want to cut that short. You know, that would, you know, that's, that's what we said we were going to do. So thank you, Brian, for putting your name in and we'll take care of that at the next meeting. Right, that's the only name on here. So I've taken that's the only, the only one you've received so far?
Yes, that's the only one that I received.
Okay. So that is the, the one opening on the planning commission. Village wastewater, that'll be continued until the policy is adopted. And that takes care of appointments. Approve the warrants. Do I hear a motion to approve the warrants?
Motion to approve the warrants dated October second, two thousand twenty-three. General fund payroll fifteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars and ninety-two cents. General fund operating expense twenty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. Highway fund payroll eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Highway fund operating expense thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. Solid waste management payroll one thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty cents. Solid waste operating expense twenty-two thousand five sixty-eight sixty-one cents. Library payroll two thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. Library operating expense five thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Golden Ridge culvert, that's a special fund, right? Special project?
Yes, it is.
Operating expense eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. The SIU grant, which is police, operating expense six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Grand total payroll twenty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Grand total operating expense eighty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-four cents.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the warrants?
At the very end, I asked Brendan to do this today and he gave us a nice thing here when I asked about the library. And I see we have five thousand five hundred dollars going to engineering or expansion. And what I said to him was, I remember looking at construction, like really degenerated rafters and whatnot for repair. But I did not recall that we were expanding. And it looks like from this map that you gave us, the footprint is going to get bigger.
Yeah, so this, so first, this money that's being expended is fundraising money that the library receives. And that fundraising money was used to do an engineering study. And then also to pay for all seasons construction to develop an estimate that was used for a grant. And that grant application was submitted and actually Mark's here tonight, which I think he was here.
I remember when he came and did it.
Yeah.
And we told him he could do it as long as we didn't have to pay for anything.
Exactly.
Remember?
Yes, I do remember that.
So, so the question is, do we actually have jurisdiction over anyone's fundraising monies?
So with the library, actually, the, the select board and the library board of trustees are both voted on. And the library board trustees are elected members of the town that oversee the library. So the select board, this, this was accidentally added onto the warrant tonight by the accountant. Generally, these just go on the library board of trustees warrant.
Yes, because I, I'm wondering now, just, this isn't town money. They raised the money themselves.
Yes.
And so if they want to spend it, whatever they want to do, I suppose that they should be able to do that. I don't think that we have authorization to spend their fundraising money.
I, I was just going to say, does it belong on our warrant? Maybe we need to...
It was a mistake.
Huh?
It was a mistake.
It doesn't belong in ours. It belongs on the library board of trustees warrant. It does have to get approved in order for the, because the fundraising money comes into the town. And anything that goes out has to go out through a check. And in order for the treasurer to sign the check, a warrant needs to be drawn on him to do that. And the library board of trustees approved that warrant.
And I'm only, so is that consistent with every other entity of the town?
Yes, all expenses have to come through the warrant process.
Do you think that other entities that raise money for themselves give that all money to the town to be then redistributed?
They're not town entities. Those are five, one, C, threes.
And it's not redistributed. It's, it's distributed through their organization.
Yeah, no, I get that. But I'm just wondering about money, them trying to separate fundraising money versus budget money. And that's...
The difference with that fundraising money is it doesn't go into the town account and this does.
I know.
Anything that goes into the town account and gets spent, they see it.
So the, so the other question that I had was this.
Yep.
The, the other question that I had was this. I wasn't aware that, that one of the, one of the fundamental things with the ARPA funds was...
Did you know?
There was a line there that said, be careful how you spend this money and try not to spend that money that will incur other annual costs. If we're increasing the size of any building, any building in town, that's going to increase the annual budget beyond the construction or whatever the cost is of what we're doing. If we were putting a room on this, you're going to have more power, you're going to have more heat, you're going to have more cleaning, you're going to have other things to take care of the very next year after it's up, after you build it.
So I'm going to have to do more fundraising.
Just saying.
They will do more fundraising.
They tend to do a lot of fundraising.
They will submit a budget to us to fundraise for it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, I don't know. I mean, this is a, then this, is it, so is this the engineering? I mean, this is pretty official. This, this is pretty detailed.
Yeah, I mean, they're currently working on it. And Mark, can you hear us?
He's muted. I'm not sure if he can hear.
I, I have, I had a follow-on question.
What's that?
I had a follow-on question too.
Go, go ahead.
I, Dave makes a very good point.
Hold, hold on, Mark. Somebody's, I've recognized somebody else now.
I'll put my question.
I'm always behind the beat, all weird.
When you're built, when you're creating the structure to the library, are you obligating future costs without going through a formal process for the town of Weathersfield in out years? So is there a ten-year or twenty-year?
That's the point he's making.
And so, so my, my point would be though is, should, should a town entity, whether it's got its own trustees or its own board, if, if the taxpayers of Weathersfield are going to have to cover a cost that's incurred, should there be an approval process through the select board for those future costs that are unknown?
Well, let's, let's examine that. This fee here is, hold on a sec. I got a, isn't this fee here for the drawings? It's not for the building, right?
Right.
Okay. So what's going to happen when it comes time to do the building, Mark?
All right, here's the first thing. Library board of trustees is, are an elected board. And according to Hartford decision, which is a Supreme Court decision, they operate the building. The select board does not. Correct?
Yep.
That's the way it works. So no, the select board does not oversee it. We can come to the select board and ask for funding. We did not. We did ask for letter of support, which you supplied, provided, which we appreciate. But no, the, the select board does not operate that building. It is a town building, similar to the school. So if you look at the structure that's in the town report, you'll see that there is an elected board that does not report to select board.
No, but, no, but...
We asked for support. We asked for support. We do have to go to you and we do work with you. But the notion that we will report to the select board because we have increases in funding for heating is not really on the table.
I, I don't think that.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that's the point, Mark. I think, I think the point, and the question is the, the money that's, that we're authorizing in this warrant tonight is the money to pay for the...
You're not authorizing. It was a mistake.
Well, well...
You don't have the authority to authorize.
Well, it's on our warrant. Do you want us to...
And that's your mistake and not ours.
Excuse me.
That is not our mistake.
Okay, then we'll...
And you can ask Brendan if that's the case.
Then we'll take a motion to remove that from our warrant?
That'll happen.
That will happen. It will be removed from our warrant. We will not sign that.
Appreciate it.
Not a problem. Now where's the money coming from to pay for this building?
The money is coming from the state from fundraising grants. And we are very adamant that we're not asking the people of Weathersfield to, to pay for them. We've worked very hard to do that.
Okay, and then...
And as, as Mr. Fuller understands, in the past, that's what happened. And to my watch, it's not what's happening.
Okay. So we're not going to see an increase in the budget coming from the board?
You'll always see, you'll always see an increase. Light goes up, insurance goes up, and it's five hundred square feet. So if you really think it's a huge increase, I, I don't get it. We're, we're, you know, I have five hundred and one people in there this month.
I, I guess where I would be is if this was my board and, and I was doing this, I would have the people's support. I, I would have it on an article and I'd have it, I... I, I, I don't recall an article that was before the people of the town to support this.
Did they elect their board of trustees just like we elect you?
I, I understand that. And I've just got done saying that if this was my board, it was responsible for this addition, I would be putting an article on, on, that would, that would be, I think the...
There, there is no money coming from, we have fundraised. They made for it. They gave us the money.
I understand.
And now we're asking for state grants. So, so I don't, I don't buy this.
But there is, but Mark, there is an annual operating cost that comes, that's located within the general fund to operate the library.
It's located in the general fund because you had audit issues. We always had our own fund. And we agreed when the town and the treasurer and the town manager came to us and we said that when that happens, there would be no interference. And they guaranteed us, and there are meeting minutes about that.
Okay, well, well, Mark, let me put it to you this way. It's in the general fund because that's where we, we have the, we have the board of directors submit their budget to the select board and we include it in the general fund. We won't do that this year. We'll put it on a separate article from the board of directors of the library and we'll let the people vote on your budget separately.
I'm, I'm agree with that.
So am I. Okay. Then we're not responsible for this and we're not responsible for that, so we can move on.
Do we have a, so I read the totals. So, yeah, but I read the totals and...
Just the totals and then the dot?
I think it's five thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Is that correct?
But they're, but they're, I don't know where that was located then.
Operating.
And I, you know, Mark, I'm confused about that too because it is fundraising. I made that point. I don't know whether you heard me or not about whether it's, you know, you, you got that money outside of everything and I thought the, the directors ought to be able to spend it too. I didn't know why we were involved anyway.
He's muted his mic again.
Mark's still there?
Yeah, yeah, but he's curious.
I'm, I'm trying. So, so, hey, could you replay? Could you just tell me the name again?
Yeah, I was confused anyway when that was located in our warrant because it said fundraising money. And I, I don't know whether you heard it or not, but I asked Brendan about why we even had it anyway. And you clarified that by, us by saying that I, I'm agreeing with you that the trustees could spend their fundraising money.
Is, is that Greenberg Associates?
Oh, okay. Greenberg and Associates are the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So it's on page forty-nine of the packet? And it says...
Then, then all seasons did a construction estimate.
Yep.
Okay. The reason for the construction estimate is to go to the state. The state has two bags of money. We had to qualify to get the forms and, and what we did, we had to give them a number. We did a needs assessment. When we did the needs assessment, that money is deferred and obviously with construction costs and all that.
But it came, but, but let, let me interrupt you there, dear. But this is all fundraising expenses, right? It's all money that was yours?
We raised.
Okay. So it's got nothing to do with our warrants. That's, I don't need an explanation. I just need, I don't need an explanation. I'm just taking it off the warrant. I think that's what Dave's looking to do. We've got it.
I just, and then you can take that up with the trustees.
It, it's, we're just, we're just...
If you allow me to speak further and say yes or no.
Yes.
All right. So the, the problem is there's a certain amount of frustration because of the overlap of jobs, correct?
No. I'm, we're just...
It was because now you're telling me you're going to separate my budget up. That's fine. This way it always was. Our job is because I'm a fiscal consultant and whether anybody likes it or not, was to combine the library with the town. The town has audit issue. We have budget issue and maybe big dreams at one point. If, if, the fact that we have disagreements during this meeting and that's over with, I would find to be a bit of a problem. I like the select board to have a say about the library. But I like the library and trustees to have the respect their due as elected officials. And as a director, it's my job to make sure everybody understands there, there is separation here and then when the mistake is made and it was not made by the library to have an item placed on the select board's agenda, I'm not sure that we should be the one being penalized for it.
I don't, I don't, I don't think you're being penalized at all. But my only question in the very beginning was, it's your fundraising money. And I really thought that your organization, which is the board of trustees, has the authority to spend that money as you see fit. And that's where we're at right now. It's got nothing to do with...
And I agree a hundred percent. I, I, this, I think this board does.
Yeah, we, we'll, we're not...
We're fine.
Yeah, we're not in any way trying to be controversial or anything. It, it clarified this, which is what we need.
And, and we have to clarify the numbers on our warrant. If we don't have authorization or the authority to do this, we've got to pull those numbers from, because Dave has already made the motion and it included those numbers. We have to remove them from this warrant. That's what we're doing. That's what we're trying to do right now. That's all. Because...
Yep. And that recognizes your, you'll have to run in to see Brendan or the, or the trustees and say, we, we have our own, we, we can pay these bills and that's our job too. So.
So.
Yep.
I, I'm not, I'm not a big finger-pointing guy. I don't care who made the mistake. We just need to fix what we got.
I mean, the biggest thing for me is separating the library from the general fund.
Yeah.
Because if we do that, we do increase our costs. We do have overlapping costs between the library and the town going down. The reason they were...
You're the town manager. We can have that discussion at, at a later date. How, I mean, and I don't think we need, we should be micromanaging any part of it. You know, you're the guy who runs the show.
I'm going to make an amendment then to what, so, so the original motion was... I'm gonna make an amendment then to, uh, what, so, uh, so the original motion was for payroll at a total of twenty-eight thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. That stays the same. And the grand total of the operating expenses is now going to be seventy-six thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-four cents.
Who made the second on that, Kelly?
Yep.
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Motion has been amended, uh, any further?
To clarify the operating expenses.
Correct. Uh, any further discussion? Were there any other questions on the warrants for, for anybody? Um, I, I had, was just noticing the, the, all the repairs and, and stuff that were going on with the, the, the fire departments. But you had said in your, I think in your report, that you're gonna be doing a, a fiscal report at the next meeting quarterly.
Yeah, and this is very normal since I've been here. They usually wait until the first of the year to get their, uh, trucks inspected and when the trucks get inspected, there's some repairs that need to be made. And we are tracking everything and that will, they were like in Q one.
And, and are, is their financial department working with you and communicating so that, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's all working good. Good, that's.
We've implemented our first orders, um, this year, so whenever an expense crosses a threshold that requires.
Good.
Masseter or three quotes or.
So that all seems to be working so far?
Yes.
First quarter, good.
So far.
Any questions? Anybody else on the warrants? Hearing none, all in favor of, uh, the, the warrants as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I think that takes us to other business. And that would be.
Move to name August Marif for the solid waste representative of the board.
I'll second that.
Uh, any discussion on the, on the motion? Um, do you have Paul's contact information at all?
I do not.
Brendan, could you see that he gets that? I think it would be helpful for you to have a conversation with Paul. He was, as, as Ray had stated earlier, he was very good at it and he's very knowledgeable and does a lot of paperwork himself, keeps track of things. And he might be able to send a lot of stuff over to you that will help you move into that, that role.
Thank you.
Just my idea.
That sounds great.
Um, any further discussion on the motion?
Just real quick, I just gotta make sure that, um, the motion has to be pretty specific for this position, um, to appoint August Marif as a solid waste representative to the board, but also to the solid waste district commission as a voting member. Uh, we have two voting members to that committee and then also the, uh, transfer station joint committee for West Windsor and Redding and Weathersfield. So Paul's position was appointed to those, to those two.
So whatever he said, we're gonna do.
Why don't we just name an employee? You've got like a long wind there.
Well, I, I, my first instinct is to look over there at Nikki and see if she's, she's kept up with all of that.
My second one would have been, my second one would have been to ask August if he really wanted to do this.
Oh, no, 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 no. You don't go, no, 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 you don't do that. No, no, no. That duck is flying into the, he's flying into the crosshairs.
This is turning from solid waste to liquid waste.
The reason why I had to be specific is because, because we tried that before and just did a solid waste representative to the select board and then, and Mark, uh, solid waste district then recognized that we would come back. So we're saying make sure that we have the motion right so that you can vote.
All these rules.
Okay, so Nikki, you're gonna be okay on that motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Aye. Wow, that was like pulling teeth. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Hold on.
Oh, Ray, I'm sorry.
Paul's also the highway rep, so that's open.
Well, well, that'll be next, next meeting.
Are you sure? I'm not sure we ever appointed one. That was, I mean, a long time ago we did, but.
We didn't do that last time.
I don't think we did.
Yeah.
Um.
Let him get used to one first.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn? Anybody?
So moved.
All those.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Thank you, Mark. Good night.
I'll, I'll learn.
Thank you, Audrey.